Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, 6:30 PM. I'm going to call to order this business meeting of the Laramie City Council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikus.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That is nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Proclamations and Presentations. So, we have two proclamations this evening. So, the first is recognition of National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is an international organization of nearly 2,000 public health professionals, and whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is dedicated to preserving the public's health and well-being through the safe, environmentally sound mosquito control program since 1935, and whereas the city of Laramie, in cooperation with the Albany County Weed and Pest Board, has been involved in mosquito control activity since 1976, and whereas the mosquito control section of the Parks and Recreation Department treats approximately 70,000 acres of rural and urban property in a 12-mile radius around Laramie, and whereas the mosquito control program follows an integrated pest management approach that includes control methods by the most economical means with the least possible pesticide exposure to people, property, and the environment, and whereas in 2016, the city of Laramie approved the updated West Nile virus plan to detect and reduce the risk of human infection associated with the West Nile virus, following best practices as outlined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and whereas, due to the efforts of the mosquito control program, the quality of outdoor summer activities in Laramie is improved, along with reducing the risk of mosquito-borne illness. Now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the week of June 25th through July 1st, 2017, as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the city of Laramie, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing mosquito control services and to recognize the contributions with mosquito control personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And I think during this time of year, we can all certainly appreciate, we've all certainly seen some of these mosquitoes come out, we have extraordinarily hard-working city staff that work with Albany County Weed and Pest, that work very hard to provide a good quality of life for us here, and we're very, very appreciative of their efforts. So, I'd like to invite Keith Wardlaw, our mosquito control supervisor, up. Thank you, Keith, very, very much.
Thank you.
Please pass on our thanks to your entire staff. Do you have any comments you want to make this evening?
Sure, if I've got just a second.
Please.
Mayor, Council, our mosquito control program has been operational since mid-April. We've been providing larval control on many of the irrigated and riparian areas around Laramie for the past couple of months. We've been really busy. The weather has not been particularly good with snowfall in mid-May and a lot of different things that have hampered our efforts, but we are making progress. We did two larval control aerial applications over the last couple of weeks. We treated almost 10,000 acres with those applications. We have an adult control application scheduled for rural areas around Laramie for next week on Monday. Press release should hit the papers today on that. And then, our residential fogging program kicked in last Friday. Our trap numbers reached the threshold where we started those applications throughout the residential areas of town. We've made one pass through each of the neighborhoods of town, and we'll be starting back in the west Laramie area tonight, weather permitting. So, we have been active and hopefully will provide you with a little better comfort in the near future.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our second proclamation is going to be for LGBT Pride Month. And I want to thank, before I read this, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight. This is an exciting time, I think, for Wyoming in general, and Laramie is very happy to be a part of this. Whereas, the First Annual Laramie Pride Fest is the most visible event in history of Laramie for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community, their friends, and their families, to express pride in who they are and who they love. And whereas, Laramie Pride Fest is dedicated to ensuring that Wyoming's LGBTQ community has a safe and inclusive environment to celebrate and honor their sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas, Laramie Pride Fest seeks to commemorate June 2017 as the 48th anniversary of the Stonewall riots, the birthplace of the modern fight for LGBTQ justice and equity. And whereas, LGBT citizens led by trans women of color, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional during the Stonewall riots. And whereas, in the four decades since, civil rights for the LGBT community have expanded substantially, and pride celebrations across the country and world have taken place every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall riots. And whereas, Laramie Pride Fest will raise awareness about Wyoming's LGBT community and their contributions to Laramie's unique, diverse tapestry in a positive and productive manner. And whereas, Laramie's LGBT community will celebrate pride during the month of June with events happening throughout the state, including Cheyenne, Casper, Pine Dale, Rock Springs, Lander, Laramie, and Jackson. And whereas, Wyoming's LGBT community are living authentically today more than ever before, and they deserve to know that the city of Laramie and the state of Wyoming supports them. And whereas, the city of Laramie celebrates its diverse LGBT community and is committed to ensuring equity for all Laramie citizens by fostering acceptance and preventing discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas, the city of Laramie is the only municipality in the state of Wyoming to have adopted a non-discrimination ordinance that prevents its residents from being discriminated on based upon their sexual orientation and gender identity through employment, public accommodations, and housing practices. And whereas, the LGBT community is a vital part of Laramie's economy, culture, and contribute to a stronger, more prosperous city when the civil rights of all people are equal. Whereas, the city of Laramie is dedicated to being an inclusive community, ensuring all residents have the ability to live, pursue education, life fulfillment, love, and work to the fullest. Therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer Pride Month in Laramie and congratulate the First Annual Laramie Pride Fest. And I also encourage citizens and municipalities across the Equality State to join us in these celebrations and recognize the accomplishments, history, and legacy of Wyoming's LGBT community. And so, tonight, we have several groups that I want to mention. We have our new President and Vice President of ASUW with us here this evening. We have Wyoming Equality, the Shepherd Foundation and Shepherd Symposium, UMC, and Spectrum, and these are all very important groups here in Laramie that work to support the LGBT community. So, I want to ask everybody to come forward. I've got some proclamations to hand out, and I understand you guys would like to take a picture and kind of celebrate and commemorate this event. Thank you. Not a Vice President. Thank you very much.
Do you want us to move in tighter?
Yep.
Could we get the whole seat down?
Sure.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Can you get him up here? I have to. Okay. Just hold on. I don't want my head... Make the mayor taller than she usually is. All right, here we go. Now, she's just sitting on her head.
Pull this chair for the mayor.
Thank you very much. It's going to be a wonderful week. I'll give you the opportunity, do you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mayor Somerville, and thank you, City Council. My name is Robert West, and I'm one of the organizers for Laramie Pride Fest, and this is just so important to me on a personal level, as a queer man here living in Laramie. But I know so many people, my friends, my family, living in Laramie and across the state, that this is also important, too. You know, Laramie still, two years later, is the only city that has an Indio, that has a non-discrimination ordinance, and this is another important step that you all, as our leaders in the city, have taken to make sure our city is an inclusive and welcoming environment. And I want to thank you all, and I want to thank all the organizations and all the people behind me that are here to support us and that have continued to show up and support the LGBTQ community, not only here but throughout Wyoming. This is a momentous occasion for the city of Laramie but throughout Wyoming, because this is only the second proclamation that actually recognizes Stonewall riots and June as Pride Month in the state, and so you all are part of history. You made history two years ago, and you are continuing to make history and lead the state in regards to acceptance and inclusivity for LGBTQ folks. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much for being here. So, onto our next item is disclosures by City Council, or I'm sorry, staff announcements. Staff, do we have any announcements this evening?
Um, not.
What about the public hearing?
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize, I skipped the public hearing.
I'll be quiet.
We don't have any staff announcements, though. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold the following public hearing and meeting at 6:30 PM on June 20, 2017, in the City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. P-P-U-D-17-01, submitted by Raw Stone Development Incorporated for the Meadows Planned Unit Development Overlay that will consist of 15 residential lots and five outlots on 30 acres of property generally located south of Spring Creek Drive and north of Hillside Drive. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on...
Your Honor, we need to do roll call before you do that, please.
I thought we already did. I apologize. Roll call, please.
You guys just think you're a charge to do.
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson, not on the public hearing. Henry.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikus.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Still here.
Nine present and zero absent.
Thank you, City Clerk. So, now, I will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to present any comments on the Meadows subdivision? Please come forward. If you could state your name for the record, and then, when you're done with your comments, if you can sign the sheet behind the City Clerk when you leave.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, my name is Steve Engel. I live on Bonneville Street, close to where the proposed subdivision is going to be. And I have more just in the manner of questions, things that I think seem to have been missed in all the preliminary proposals. The first one, of course, is the water supply, and I see where the city has said, "Yep, everything's fine." I don't know if that was based on average per day use, or if that was peak use, like probably if it doesn't rain, we're probably going to have some peak use. And so, we're possibly looking at between 5,000 and 10,000 gallons a day going into the subdivision for the lawns. And so, I'm just, you know, I'm just a little nervous about that. Second aspect with that is how the sewer system is going to tie in with the subdivision. The figures that I saw in the 50-page proposal show the sewer lines going to, abutting at Spring Creek and not joining in to an existing sewer line. The water supply, I got ahead of myself, the water supply seems, they show two 8-inch lines in the Corthell subdivision at Hillside and Holiday, and I don't really see how that's going to tie in with the lines. Potentially, that's not a lot of water when you're talking between 5,000 and 10,000 average, and substantially more during this, during the summer. Second one, question I have, I basically sketched out a dozen here, is that there doesn't seem to be any provisions for the outfall of water from the swale that's going to go down along the Ashley Extension. It just seems to dead-end right at the cul-de-sac. There's potentially a lot of water that's going to be going down there, specifically like spring runoff or any kind of big storm. And I know what's on the subdivision, you know, that's their business, but potential impacts to Latrell Park with runoff from it, potentially a mosquito breeding ground, and there would be no access to it for spraying unless you go in the cul-de-sac, but that's a private drive. The fencing design, the proposal says it's going to be similar to what's there now. There are several different types of fences out surrounding the area, fallen down, three-strand barbed wire, you know, sheep-type fence. Just what is, what are they going to be putting up? Someone suggested in the comments at the first meeting that split rail. I know that'd be real expensive, so I can see the option. One thing I'd like to see is because there are a lot of antelopes that winter there and summer there, is Wyoming Game and Fish has design standards, four fences so that critters don't get tangled up in them, and I would like to see that considered. Also, speaking of Game and Fish, is, has Game and Fish designated this as a critical, crucial antelope winter range? Or is there no designation at all? Still, speaking with other entities, Spring Creek is a perennial stream with fish in it, potentially, I haven't looked this up, it's possibly a Class 1 stream, and so the core of engineers would need to get involved with it as to potential impacts to the creek itself or the Eluvia Valley flora that's on either side of it. Is, what sort of, another question, what sort of development is planned for the outlots? The outlots under the, and the city can be really, really diverse as to what can go on to them. It could be things like clubhouses, tennis courts, pitch and putt, or whatever. So, I'm kind of curious about what kind of, what kind of development would be allowed, or if there could be some restrictions on it. The extension of 30th Street with the 30th Street Bridge is mentioned and referenced to the PUD. I went to where the reference was supposed to be in the PUD, and there's no mention of the 30th Street Bridge. So, I don't know, you know, if there's some information that should have been there that And has groundwater been considered in the plans at all? Huck Finn Pond is pretty much groundwater-fed. I mean, it's always discharging, there's always water in it. Water table's just a few feet below the surface. It would have to be fed by Spring Creek, or most likely, Spring Creek. And I mentioned mosquito control. And I don't, I didn't see in that proposal where the status is on the MOU, if that's already been finalized. And items 5 through 7 and Attachment 3 on the MOU, when I read that, I was pretty confused as to who's going to be what and where, and if the development doesn't go forward, where those boundary lines are going to be. Is it going to block off, any block off Spring Creek, it could be north of Spring Creek, south of Spring Creek, there's going to be the dogging path. That's about it. I was also kind of curious as to who's going to be responsible for snow removal and maintenance on the Ashley Extension. I'm glad that the professional engineer didn't sign off on the street design for the extension. That's going to be, because they got, there's going to be some problems if they put it that way. I know it's preliminary. That's about the extent of my questions. So, again...
I appreciate you coming this evening, and I also want to let you know, we have planning staff here that hopefully can help answer a lot of your questions to make sure you have all the information you need. And we'll only be on second reading tonight for this, so there'll be at least another one more opportunity.
Okay, yeah, and I wasn't going to ask about that, because the first one was canceled and the second one was without notice.
Yep. So... I appreciate you coming and giving comments tonight, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public that want to make comment on this subdivision? Please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Kristi Palmer, and I'm speaking tonight because Latrell Park is my favorite park, and it's always been my favorite park. And I think it's because it has the prairie right next door, it's very unique, it's the only park in Laramie that has the prairie, has the antelope coming in and out on a regular basis, and, you know, just regular wildlife, ducks, birds, owls. And my main concern with this proposed development is that it will change the character of the park. I know it's not in the park, but it's, you know, right adjacent to the park, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you sign the sheet as you leave? Thank you so much. Any members of the public, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Craig Hodney, I live on 2127 Hillside Drive. The other gentleman's gripes or concerns are very valid, but mine's pretty basic. As far as traffic, I know nobody's really brought it up, but I know of, my house has one two-year-old. House right down next to me has a 14-year-old, and the one down next to me has a three-year-old and a one-year-old. There is a home daycare at 2215 Hillside, and our main concern is control of traffic, being that Hillside would be their main flow. I would really just like to see a stop sign at La Perrel and Hillside, and even at Holiday and La Perrel. And can we even just, I mean, if we're in the mood of putting stop signs on Hillside, just crank one up by Bonneville, just to slow them down, because I live at the bottom of Hillside, and the only way to get anybody slowed down is put a caution sign out that says "Children at Play," and about 20% of the time, I see brake lights. So, that is our main concern, because also, it's my understanding, looking at the plans, that they called for a variance on, just to be a cul-de-sac, so it's only one entrance, one out, one way in, one way out. So, they'll basically just come whipping down Hillside and hopefully not hit my kid or the home daycare or my neighbor's teenager or my other neighbor's little three-year-old and one-year-old. So, I think if we could consider that, and along with the water pressure issue and some of the runoff and the wildlife, and by when they remock the boundaries, I think it's just going to go across the gravel, not, just go right next to the gravel road. So, but other than that, that's our, that's our main concern, is traffic and potential traffic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Can you repeat your name, please?
Craig, C-R-A-I-G, Hodney, H-O-D-N-Y.
And on your stop sign, shouldn't he go to the Traffic Commission on that?
That would be, yes, we have...
Find your Traffic Commission meeting and tell them where you'd like stop signs at, because they will help you with that.
I think our...
I won't guarantee they'll do it, but they might help you with it.
Our planning staff has heard the comments as well and can follow up on all of that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Any other members of the public that want to comment on this subdivision? Going once, twice? All right, I'm going to close that public hearing. And now, I'm going to move on to announcements for staff. Are there any announcements still?
The only announcement we had, Mayor, was Keith Wardlaw, and he may have already covered everything.
I think he did. All right. Moving on to the next item is disclosures by City Council members. Do we have any disclosures for any items we're going to discuss this evening? Seeing none? All right, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor for the agenda.
Okay. I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. On to the regular agenda, item number 10. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you very much. This is the title, is awarded for the bid for the 11th Street Waterline Replacement Project. I move to award the bid for the 11th Street Waterline Replacement Project to Six Point Solutions LLC, Laramie, Wyoming, in the amount of $328,129.70, along with contingency of $32,813 for a total amount of $360,942.70 to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Second.
Second by Counselor Hanson.
Clean water, we give them all the time.
Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, the 11th Street Waterline Replacement Project includes a replacement of approximately 790 lineal feet of 6-inch cast iron water line with new 8-inch PVC pipe. The project runs from Russell Street to Steel along 11th. We'll also be making improvements within both of those intersections, so what we try to do is extend the project, this type of project, through the intersection so that we don't disrupt that intersection twice with similar projects. So, this project bid did include an add alternate, which was the milling of the trench width that turned out to be at a lower cost than remove and replace asphalt, and the city does retain ownership of those millings, so that's that black recycled asphalt that we use in L.A. and so forth. Per the city's purchasing policies, the project was placed out to bid and publicly advertised. Bid opening was on June 6, 2017. Six Point Solutions was the low bidder at $329,338.25. Staff recommends an award of bid to Six Point Solutions. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Smith. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just...
Just quick question. Usually when we do something like that, we also do sewer line, et cetera. Are those all in good shape so we don't have to do those in this particular case? Because there's always a question of tearing up the street once and not tearing it up more than once.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson. Yes, that's correct. Quite often, we'll do a project where we replace both water and sewer lines and, in some cases, storm sewers. But in this case, the only utility that needed to be replaced was the water line. So that's the complete scope of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Smith? Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? Comments or discussion from council on this item? Nope? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Summerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to item number 11, Councilor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that council approve the state revolving loan fund documents for the Northside Tank Project and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second. Second by Councilor Henry. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council. You may recall authorizing staff to apply for a drinking water state revolving loan, fund loan for the Northside Tank Project. The loan would supplement previously awarded Water Development Commission monies for the Northside Tank Project. So the Northside Tank Project includes a 1 million gallon water storage tank northeast of town along with about 22,000 lineal feet of water transmission pipeline. Most of that is 24-inch diameter, but there is some 20-inch and 14-inch pipe associated with that project as well. So staff was successful in putting together the application for the SRF loan. We were awarded that about a month or six weeks ago. These loan documents finalize that loan and allow us to then draw the proceeds. So it's a total award of $4,356,000 with a principal forgiveness of $507,841. It does include or require an origination fee of $21,780. The interest rate is 2.5% over 30 years, so that's a pretty good deal. And there are a number of documents within the packet that need to be approved and signed. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Smith? Seeing none? Thank you, Director Smith. Any comments from council on this item or comments from the public? Apologies. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. Director Smith mentioned everything. One thing we should probably also mention, it obligates the city, of course, for 20 years to pay this back. So it's a major project that we're doing. Isn't it 20 years?
Thirty.
Thirty years, sorry. I shaved off 10 years, I'm sorry. It's easy, thank you.
Hopefully, we can do that, too.
Any public comments on this item? All right, any further discussion by council? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Summerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Onto item number 12, Councilor Polikas.
Thank you. I would move to approve the contract between the city of Laramie and McBride Yard Waste Collection LLC for curbside collection of green waste within the municipality and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council. Before I get started, I wanted to mention that I have Brooks Webb, our solid waste manager, here with me today and he can answer technical questions. Via the web, we-
Jonathan, I'm going to Skype him, he can hear you before you start.
Apologies.
There he is. Can you hear us, Jonathan?
Yeah, hold on, there he is. Had to turn off the live feed, so I wasn't getting feedback.
All right.
As you can see, Jonathan McBride is here via the internet and Gene Russell with McBride Yard Waste is also in the audience here this evening. I wanted to give a little background on the history of this topic before I turn it over to McBride's for their presentation. We had a work session on April 11 concerning this topic to discuss issues and concerns that we had with most particularly the neighborhood convenience sites. As we discussed at that meeting, a component of our composting program where we collect approximately 15% of our green waste through that arm of the program. The other 85% is collected directly at the landfill. So as you can see, the program started in 2010 and the neighborhood convenience sites were initiated to sort of jumpstart the green waste collection process. They were never meant to be a permanent long-term feature for the community. In 2010, the cost of that neighborhood convenience site was roughly $28,000. That cost grew to over $81,000 in 2016. So you can see the cost of that program is escalating and it keeps getting more heavily used every year. At that work session, we presented a number of alternatives, potential solutions to that growing problem. Based on the impact from, input from council, you favored option D and E of the various options presented at that work session. Option D was to develop a public-private partnership to replace the convenience program with curbside collection of green waste. Option E was to replace the convenience program with a municipal-operated curbside collection program. In both cases, you preferred a voluntary program as opposed to a mandatory program. And that's the direction that we left that work session that evening. That brings me to the work session on June 12, just last Monday, where we presented sort of the results of the work that we had been doing since the April work session. Based on your direction, we had issued a request for qualification soliciting private partnerships. So based on, one of the solutions was to develop a public-private partnership. We issued an RFQ soliciting proposals for that partner. That turned out to be McBride Yard Waste, who proposed a voluntary program for the community. It did include a subsidy of $42,000 per year for the first four years. That reduced to $21,000 for the next two and then it expired after that, so there was no subsidy. So in essence, the subsidy would sunset after six years and the city would then realize the benefit or the savings from turning this program over to the private sector. The other alternative was also considered, and that would be the city developing its own curbside green waste collection program, similar to what was proposed by McBride's. If we proposed or implemented a mandatory program, it would cost us about $183,000 per year at a cost of about $21.50 per residential customer per year. So if we had a voluntary program, it would cost us just under $60,000 at a cost of roughly $70 per customer. So that brings me back to the staff recommendation, which is to enter into a contract with McBride Yard Waste for a public-private partnership. We feel it will increase the level of service to the community. It'll eliminate the neighborhood blight caused by the current collection method. You all have heard a lot of the complaints that we have from neighbors of those collection sites. They don't appreciate them very much. It'll lower the city's overall cost and it'll help eliminate financial risk to the solid waste fund. With that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan McBride and Gene Russell. Brooks and I will be here available for questions as well.
Before I let you go, any questions for Director Smith right now? Okay, thank you.
Hey, guys.
Welcome.
How's it going? Sorry, I actually had a suit today and my son stuck snacks in my bag and they were loaded with chocolate. That was great driving through, so that was really fun. Jonathan, are you ready to rock and roll here?
Yeah, I am ready. I turned off the live feed, so I can't see anybody. Sorry, I can't refer to that name. But if we're ready, we'll go ahead. First off, I just want to say thank you for bringing this up real quick tonight. I know that the city staff has put a lot of work into this and as a city, council members as well have done the research and put the passion into this. We appreciate it coming up with this. And then I'm just going to ask that, do you have any questions? If you could just hold it until the end and then, Gene, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Jonathan, you might want to speak a little slower, okay? Thought I could take it.
Okay. Can everyone hear me all right?
No.
Yep.
We can hear them, we can't understand.
Okay. It's tough to understand, so if it's going where we can't understand, I'll just fill in.
Okay, and I'll try and get closer to the mic. Is that any better?
Little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. So to start off, we're not going to dig into too many. I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, Jonathan, I'll go ahead and just take over here, okay?
Okay.
It's pretty tough to hear. So basically, if, like what Jonathan said, is we'd like for you to hold your questions till the very end. All of you received the RFQ, correct, in detailing our service and what it all entails. I'm just making sure that you all received that via email and understand. So like Jonathan was saying, we're not going to go into the details of our service in which many of you already know. What we're really focused on primarily doing is going over the concerns that you have. So over the past 10 months, we've been working with the city staff and to develop a kind of a tailor-made system for Laramie as an alternative to the neighborhood collection sites. And that has gone really well, it's been very eye-opening. We've had the opportunity to talk to residents, to talk to you guys, to talk to Janine, Earl and Brooks extensively. And which kind of brings us to the first topic of making sure that we're addressing all of your concerns and issues. So at the very end, if you guys have anything else to add, please write it down and we can talk about it. So kind of to start off, for the first concern that I know a lot of you may have is the subsidy. You know, why the subsidy? What's the point of the subsidy? And it's just the direction that allows us to be able to reduce the cost in which Brooks, Earl and the city staff felt that the city of Laramie deserved in terms of being very competitive and in fact, one of the most competitive in the panhandle or in the Wyoming region here, I'm sorry. And so that number definitely was determined through mutual party. We gave the city staff multiple options, what they felt the most comfortable, and that was tailored towards making sure that we, one, were taking into account the city of Laramie and its residents. Two, just making sure that, and Jonathan, if you have something, just go ahead and, I don't know if you can turn it up a little bit to add in and then I can speak on there. So if I'm missing anything else. Oh, okay, Jonathan, can you turn your live feed off?
Yeah, I just muted it.
Okay. So if you have anything else, Jonathan, to add, you can start and I can probably finish your thought there, okay? So that's how kind of that number was determined. And I know a lot of listening to you guys and had many concerns about why that number and what was the point. So what we're asking and through where the city is, that the city was already providing a subsidy for a service for the city that was an optional service to the tune of $81,000. So what we had worked with the staff was, is cutting that in half for four years. And then for the following two years, cutting that in half to where after six years, the city would be out of risk totally financially with the green waste solution. And that was a big selling point for us and for them. We've done our research and market analysis to determine that we feel that we will hit market saturation in Laramie, judging by comparable markets, same size of town. We've spoken with Cheyenne to talk about their opt-in growth and what it was, Gillette, Wyoming, all those similar towns that have implemented their service. And we feel that we will hit market saturation after about four years, which is roughly about 5,000 homes. So when you really think about that, that's about 80 to 90% of available residential areas that actually have a yard that landscaping needs. So we felt that that was very significant and so did the city staff to where we were comfortable moving forward with that. Another concern that was brought up here, let me just make sure I have my notes ready to go here, was that, and I'm going to read here, just only 15% of the weight comes from the drop-off locations. And green waste is typically measured in cubic yards and not tons. And so soil in bulk is typically sold in cubic yards, which includes trees and, you know, which are very heavy, obviously. A tree can weigh upwards to, you know, tons, tons and tons. So this is a number that we felt that we're still the second highest contributor and we feel like that's going to grow. And I know initially, you guys had concerns about the amount of composting and the cost. We had been in talks with the city staff with a solution to the composting problem, but specifically for the RFQ was mainly to address the primary concern of collection. And so that we had kind of worked out a rough draft, a plan, but we were going to address that when that time came as well. So that's just kind of addressing a few of your concerns. Jonathan, did you have on your notes here, I know you wanted to specifically talk about some, so go ahead if you can hear me and chime in and I'll piggyback.
If everyone can hear me all right. One of the big things, and we know the subsidy is a concern for some, is that the $42,000 is the amount that the city already has budgeted to provide an option.
Okay, and so you're cutting out again. Just to kind of reiterate, that's just the, Jonathan, go ahead and say that one more Okay, and we can't hear you at all, so just making sure. So kind of piggyback off of, just continuing down the line of your concerns, those are a few that we wanted to make sure that we addressed and we addressed well. And I know another concern was, what is the success rate? I know one of you had mentioned that you're concerned that, I know, an arbitrary number has thrown out, well, we're thinking that we might have 1,000 customers with the first year. And I want you to really think about, you know, where that came from. So we've actually done our market analysis with the comparable markets in terms of where they were at year one, year two, year three, year four. And that's where we asked that you would kind of look a little bit more long-term. So our intent is for the first three months of the service, since we're kind of ending towards the summers, to offer the service for free. That would include the subsidy for this year and then move into the actual $69 a year after. And that's going to allow people to gauge the worth of the service. And we feel like it's, and it's aggressive marketing plan on our part that we feel has paid off prior to our experience with our retention rate, which allowing customers to try the service out free for a month. So we feel that, we didn't want to put that necessarily in the RFQ primarily because we weren't sure of when this, if and when this was going to be approved. So that was, I know if you look through, I think it says the pro-rated cost would be $35, but we would- $35, but we would waive that depending on if it was voted upon tonight for this particular year. And that really allows people to see the significance and the convenience of the service. Okay? Is there any questions based off of those primary concerns that we addressed? The last concern was who are we and are we gonna work, right? I mean, that's the thing. And that's where you guys put your trust into the city staff. And that's where we had talked with them over the past 10 months to make sure that they had vetted us out, to make sure that we are organized and very particular about how we handle things and to make sure that we are the right ones for the job. And that was through the RFQ process, this through talking with them and with you and the residents. So, I'll take it open for questions here.
Questions. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two questions. We've had a lot of correspondence from people about this.
Great.
And I think one of the questions was, will you provide an extra bin or how does this thing work at the curb site?
Absolutely. So, anyone that wants to purchase an additional cart or bin, they absolutely can. It's the same price as the service, what it is, so it'd be an additional $69 for that service. So, and that's $69 for the year. So, we have to remember that, which breaks down to roughly about $5.50 a month. And that, to answer your question, absolutely.
No, I didn't quite understand that. If you sign up for the service, you get a bin?
Yep. So, if you sign up for the service, you, for $69, you get your bin and it's a weekly service. So, at the same day of every week, we'll come and we'll work with the city to make sure we work our truck routes out, but that would be picked up at roughly the same time every day.
And people would sign up through you directly, not through the city?
Correct. So, the city, in talking with them, has agreed to funnel us through a website that's currently live right now with information for prospective Laramie residents, which we have gotten actually, you know, without even really advertising, a lot of interest in phone calls. And we also have obviously a phone number that you can reach us at and go through as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Henry?
Yeah, you said it, $69 a year, would the people be billed monthly or yearly?
So, we have set up two payment options. So, preferably, as you heard, Janine, the overhead, our preference and what a lot of people's preference is, is to pay upfront for the year. But we also have payment plans as well for those that may not want to pay all upfront for the year.
Counselor Schuster?
They've all been answered. Everybody's asked the questions. I was gonna, I want to make a comment at the end, but no questions.
Questions, Counselor McKinney?
How many yards will a bin hold?
Roughly about 10,000 square feet of yard waste, so grass clippings, leaves. That's where we have estimated when our prior customers of what one yard would hold, 10,000 square feet of yard.
Counselor Pligus?
I'm interested in your comparable markets.
Yes.
I know the ones that the city looked into were all communities twice as large as our community at the very least, if not, some of them even considerably larger. Did you compare any markets that are similar in population to our community?
Yes, so...
Especially when you factor in that our population also considers, concerns or has a student market and also has a high rental property market, which is about 40%.
Mm-hmm. So, actually, yes. Carney, Nebraska is one that is very similar in size, the University of Carney, Nebraska there as well. And they also have their opt-in service. And we pulled from them as well and we got their year-to-year data. And they had roughly 4,500 total signups and that was about that year four mark in terms of what we're talking about for market saturation. After that, it kind of plateaus off to make sure that they had. So, that was, to answer your question, Laramie had a similar, and I don't have the document in front of me, but Laramie had a very similar household size as well as Carney, and that's where we also gauged it, too. So, we also looked at towns with universities.
Can I ask another question concerning your bins? At the end of the season, will they be, will the homeowner be keeping those bins?
Yep.
Will you be collecting them? And then a follow-up question to that, if you're keeping, if the homeowners are keeping the bins, you just, is, will there, I'm wondering if there's gonna be a challenge the following year when all of a sudden people have to pay for these bins versus being free and the challenge of collecting all the bins that are no longer being part of your system.
Correct. So, to answer your first question, yes, they keep it all throughout the year. To answer your second question, we have a great policy that we follow ourselves in terms of being able to start the end, the start of the year with making sure that we have a sign-up date and incentive usually that goes along with that. And then after that, we usually handle that, the best part about being a private entity is being able to handle that case-by-case in which we take pride in our customer service and talking through with customers and following up, and we have that as well. So, to answer your question, absolutely, yeah, we do. And is it something that is cumbersome, I think is maybe what you're asking? For us, no, that's just part of our job.
One more question.
Absolutely.
If I were to choose not to keep that bin through the winter, I would be able to call you and you'd pick up the bin for the winter for me?
Yes, but when that happens, usually, and we don't have that happen very often, but when that happens, there's usually a delivery fee that is involved, a small delivery fee of usually $10 for us to come pick it up, especially for you not to keep it.
Following year.
Yeah, if you want, if you didn't want to keep it, you wanted us to store it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Henry?
Another question is, I just, I pulled up your website, it's good. So, is this how you will market your, I mean, because not everybody in Laramie...
Sure. No, that's actually, we have a marketing strategy. So, in the past, what we have primarily done, we've already been in contact with the Laramie Boomerang as well as Laramie Live and in contact with getting their price packages ready to go. So, the first step is obviously through the city. The city will have to announce the closure of the neighborhood sites and in combination, we'll be able to do what's called an all-mailers, to which everyone in the town will get kind of a flyer, a postcard that explains and gives information about what green waste is, how it's collected and what the importance of it to your community is. And with the incentive, and I know we had been in talks with the city staff about if you use the green waste, that they would get up to upwards of 1,000 pounds of free compost if they participated in our program. So, yes, to answer your question, there's very many outlets. We also, aside from that, we've talked to radio, newspaper, all-mailers, direct mail, everyday direct mail, as well as through the city.
Counselor McKinney?
You said if you got that contract, that you'd do the first 30 days for free?
First three months. So, like we, so basically, once it's approved in our contract, so that we will start within eight weeks of approval. So, if that's tonight, and I don't have my calendar up, but that's roughly in the middle of August, I believe. So, for the rest, from August through November, is what we would be providing for free for anyone who wanted to sign up, just to try it out for the service.
Through the end of November, yes.
Through the end of November, correct.
That's what my concern was, is that you'd give them 30 or 60 days, get 30 or 60 days out. We get no snow until the end of November.
Right, yeah, that leaf pickup is pretty tough. We've also read about your leaf program and how it was discontinued. We've got lots of phone calls based off of that, saying that, wow, it would be just very interesting to have, only for the leaf aspect as well, so...
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious how this free system would operate? How would the residents pick up the free?
So, that would all be through our advertising efforts in which I talked about. So, it'd be very clearly communicated that for this year only, since there's only roughly three months left of service from when we would start, that we would, anyone who wanted to try the cart would absolutely get one. And we, that way, that's the point of that eight-week timeframe, Councilman, is that we just need that time to prepare, to make sure that we had all the infrastructure ready to go, that everyone could, that wanted to, to participate in the service for the rest of this year for free. And that's what also, you know, obviously, that we're going to do to, for the residents of Sydney. And that's, you know, one of the driving factors that we consider as a great marketing plan to get everyone to talk about and to make sure that it's done well and people understand the importance of making sure that we enter clean waste into our landfill.
Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. In your marketing, I think it's a great idea what you're doing with the free three months this year. Have you considered like running a sale for next year if you pay for it now?
So, we actually have, we actually have done that, but with the subsidy in the contract, we were kind of tied with that. So, in the past, we have done for anyone, incentives for whoever signs up. But, yeah, so whoever signs up early, and that would be, same with the free service, is we had a July 15 deadline. For anyone who signed up by then, we'd get the service free for the remainder of this year. Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Hanson?
There is a tricky part here. Option D is the one that we're talking about right now because that's the one...
Optional.
Yeah, option D of our plan, yeah.
Yep.
And the last sentence on the first column says uncertain whether free collection of landfill would continue. So, I'm kind of...
While you were gone, they cleared that up. So, absolutely would still continue. So, people who did not want to participate in the service with us could still bring their yard waste out to the landfill for free.
But I guess it's not up to you. It would be up to the landfill people.
Yeah, we talked to them.
You would continue it?
Yes.
The free landfill?
That's our charge.
Okay. Well, it says uncertain, you know, that's...
Yeah, no, we would.
You would continue, which of course cuts into their profits, you know? That's why I'm kind of surprised that it would be and that you're fine with it.
Sure, absolutely. And, you know, we've actually done our market analysis on how it does and actually all those other towns that we had still had the option for free landfill. And I think that's what makes the system so great, is that you're affording, someone who would normally, for like a waste management system, was gonna cost 15 to 20 dollars a month, you know, that may not be in the cards. But since the subsidy in which you guys would be helping drive that price down, it's a lot more affordable for everyone as opposed to paying $5.50 a month.
Okay.
Yep. Good question.
So, I have a couple of quick questions for you, if I can ask a couple. So, first, I want to ask you, your comparison to Carney. So, Carney runs a city municipal waste collection. They don't have a private service.
Correct.
So, to me, these seem to be two, the apples and oranges is what I'm being told, that a private service is not like a municipal service. Tell me, have you guys done any market analysis or data on cities of our size and our composition with private services that are successful?
You know, not particularly with private at our size. So, we've looked into the Lincoln, Omaha, larger town range in which that data is obviously a lot more skewed. They have multiple private entities that they can choose from, that roughly range between the 15 and 20 dollars, sometimes 25 dollars a month if you want to get into Denver for that service. But, no, it's actually around this size of town, like Casper, obviously does not have a program. We have, there is not enough data to be able to come out to you and otherwise than from what we have previously worked with to say, you know, here's the comparable analysis there. Good question, though.
Second question, so referring to the free landfill disposal, so that's not mentioned in the contract anywhere. So, that's a concern for me first because there is a non-compete paragraph in the contract that does say the city will agree to end its current services related to neighborhood collection. I understand that's the collection sites out and about. But it also goes on to say the city also agrees it will not directly or indirectly create, endorse, solicit, distribute, or offer any other services related to the collection of yard waste, directly or indirectly, that might compete with the contractor, which is you guys. To me, that's very, very broad-reaching. So, that says the city can't promote that we have free drop-off at the landfill. When I had conversations with, I believe Jonathan, he said that you guys were not looking to have monopoly in the city, that that's not part of the contract. But what I see in the contract is very much the opposite. It basically says if another contractor comes into town and wants to do the same service, that we cannot cooperate with that contractor as well.
So, essentially, I think the language is interpreted a little bit differently. So, in our minds, we were saying, you know, say we started the service three years and all of a sudden the city says, wow, you know, I think maybe, all of a sudden, we want to just go ahead and jump right into the service. That was the point of the non-compete. As for any other company that would like to come in, that part wasn't the way that we were structuring that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right.
So, yeah, so that, the main portion of that was just to make sure that the city didn't all of a sudden say, you know what, we're gonna start the neighborhood sites again during that time in that way because any time that you compete with the city, which ends the partnership essentially.
So, can I ask our city attorney, can you clarify that for me on the language on the non-compete? Because I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Because what I'm reading says that we can't do any of those things that I described and we can't cooperate with any other contractors should they appear.
Yeah, I think there's several parts to this. First, our free collection at the landfill is not in competition with the business that goes around and picks up bins. So, it doesn't stop us from doing what we're continuing to do and intend to continue to do, apparently. Number two, yes, we are foreclosed from entering another contract with another, a competing firm of them, of theirs. We're foreclosed, the city's foreclosed, from getting somebody else to do this while they're still doing it. Third, though, a private business can come into this town unrelated to the city and unrelated to them and do what they wish, assuming all the correct permits and things. So, competition is not foreclosed, but us lining up competition...
Cooperating.
Or cooperating with that competition, that is foreclosed.
Okay, thank you. And my third question is I want to ask on the subsidy, because that seems to be, that's an issue that I'm having personally.
Sure.
The subsidy is pretty substantial for me. So, with this subsidy, the rates that you would charge next year, we'll say this year's free, next year. So, that rate is exactly what the city of Laramie would charge customers to initiate our own city municipal service. So, explain to me why it's a good deal for the city to pay a subsidy and make our residents that want to use the service pay the same rate versus no subsidy and the citizens just pay the rate? So, essentially, the city is much better off if we're doing it ourselves, not doing it with you guys. Can you help me see why?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm not seeing why this is a good deal.
Great question, Mayor. Absolutely, great question. So, first part is that we have to remember that there's an end to the contract. So, it's four years at $42,000 and then two years at 21, and then you're financially free of any obligation at all. And we just want to make it clear, we have no intention, absolutely none, to come back to the city after six years and say, let's re-up the subsidy, that we have no intention of doing that. We just want to make that very, very clear. Secondly, we know with, in talking with Janine, that the ebbs and flows of the Wyoming state allocations for money sometimes stinks, right? Absolutely. So, that's a risk that they are very hesitant to take. And I can't speak for Janine, but Earl obviously is here, but that's something that is a larger risk for the city to take, to where you may have the allocations one year, but maybe not the next year. And, correct me if I'm wrong, and that's from what our conversations were. As for us, we assume more of the risk and of taking that on. And that's something that we feel very confident as, as well as we can implement very quickly, within eight weeks. Something for that stature, the city obviously has to plan, organize, and it's a large infrastructure building for that.
Other questions from council members? Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few questions. Well, we, at our green waste sites, we do not permit lambs, Christmas trees, that kind of thing. Do you foresee prohibiting Christmas trees, large lambs into your green waste container?
Yeah, well, especially, yes. So, we have on our website, actually, and then what's allowed and what's not allowed. And the great thing, Counselor Shumway, is that when I dump the truck, I see everything fall in. I have a big bay window right behind me and I get to see everything fall into our bin. And then it's actually in the contract on us. So, if we bring anything to the landfill that is, like that something slips through, that's on us to make sure that we sift through it. Though it's another thing that, for the city, which was a great option for them, that they don't have to spend the time, that labor-intensive time. So, no, we don't allow big tree limbs or anything like that either as well.
Should a resident use, forget to take the plastic bags out, do you, is there a penalty for that or do you just not pick it up or what?
So, they don't have to put plastic bags in, they can just dump them right in.
I know.
I'm sorry.
We don't permit plastic bags at our landfill with green waste. Do you, is there a penalty for someone that puts, you know, gets their lawn clippings and puts them in your container inside a plastic bag?
Well, what we do, and this is a great question because this has came up in the past for us. So, what we do is when we see, if we see a bag come out, we just stop the truck right there and empty it out and then we contact that customer.
Okay.
And then we say, hey, just so you know, we saw a bag in there, please make sure you don't do that again. We handle that case-by-case. It's not necessarily like, boom, you're fined for that. It's not necessarily like boom, you're fined for that. That's a, another great thing that we take pride in is our customer service and we haven't had very much of that. There's some, sometimes occasionally like a box in there or something, put, someone pushed it out, but we get to see it all fall right in. So that's, that's something that we can just stop right then and there, um, you know, turn off the truck, either walk out and talk to, talk to the person or give them a phone call.
In Laramie, we're, we're a very transient community. And so let's suppose someone takes your service at the end of school year, somehow they do not get the container for you to pick up.
Mm-hmm.
What, what happens?
So we send out communications, um, all throughout via lots of, uh, technology through the mail as well as email. So when we sign up, we ask for that information if they want to give. The primary way is through the mail. We send a letter, um, at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, the end of the year, um, detailing out, you know, what they need to do with their cart, whether if they're going to store it for the winter, how to properly wash it to make sure it doesn't smell within, um, wherever they're storing it, as well as if they want to, if they want us to come pick up their cart, the timeframe to do that. Um, and then we, we, uh, we announce it very early, like around February, we send another letter to saying, you know, please, uh, this is your chance for renewal. If you are choosing not to renew, please contact this number. And then we have a certain date that we set that says, okay, if they haven't signed up by this date, then we start to make our phone calls and to make sure that they are, um, if they haven't moved or if they forgot to tell us, that we need to make sure that that's done.
And if, if they do move and do not contact you, what's the charge?
So if they, if they move and they haven't paid.
They just leave the cart behind and, and then, you know.
And the next person kind of inherits it?
Yeah.
So that, that actually has happened where someone has moved, uh, you know, multiple people have moved and then we just, they forgot to just turn it over. So what we do is we just talk to the, the current resident that's there and say, what's that?
So, so then you don't send it?
No, we wouldn't send the current resident a bill for not signing up for the service. They have to actually personally call or sign up online, um, to sign up for our service.
Okay. And then is there a cost to pick up if they opt out?
If they opt out, like mid-year?
Let's say we do our free thirty, three, three months and say, I don't want to do this, there's no.
No, there's no cost, no cost at all.
Then one more, um, question.
Only, the only cost is if they want us to store it for them.
Okay. Um, what about someone that wants to get a second container? Is there a lower cost for two container pickups at the same address?
No, so essentially they're, they're paying for the service just double fold. So it's, uh, the additional cart is an additional sixty-nine dollars.
And one size, there's just one size container?
Correct.
Okay. And you, you talked about so many square feet of surface.
Of yard waste, yeah, clippings usually.
Are these containers approximately the same size as our current containers?
Yep, they're ninety-five gallon, uh, containers, the exact same size.
Same thing, okay.
Yep.
Counselor Pligus.
I have some questions for staff. I don't know whether you want me to wait or there may be a reply from McBride.
Well, let's wait and make sure we don't have any other direct questions for McBride. Anybody else have any other questions for McBride? Counselor Henry.
Um, as Counselor Gabriel pointed out to me, we couldn't find in the contract anything about the free compost to, to current customers.
It's not in there. It was more, yeah, we, we wanted to make sure first that we focused on the request for quote, the initial just collection part of it. And that was something that we had initially talked about as a benefit for the resident to participate in the service because it benefits the city as well, it benefits us. And so, um, that we would just, uh, make sure that we made an agreement on that. So didn't feel like it necessarily had to be in the contract. Yep.
Counselor Gabriel.
So just to follow up on that, would the residents have a central location to pick that up then?
It would still be all through the landfill.
Okay.
Right.
Let you take the question.
Your Honor, the mayor.
Don't go too far. Please.
To answer the question, that, that hasn't been sorted through yet. If, if it's the, the council's pleasure to offer, say a thousand pounds per, uh, customer that signs up, then we would create some form of a voucher system or some proof, maybe their invoice from McBride's or something. They could bring it to the landfill and we would, we would help them load up a thousand pounds of compost if that's the way we choose to proceed.
Thanks.
So what's the difference between a stick and a branch?
Uh, in thickness, really. I mean, it really, at, at, in some points, we, we, when we see it come through, if we see that it's a log, then we go, come out and say, okay, we make sure we contact the customer.
The reason I ask is I trimmed a relatively dying lilac.
Sure, small sticks are okay.
So the lilac, probably the diameter of the biggest, because I just was able to do the lopper, right?
Yep.
You know, not the saw or anything, was like an inch and a half diameter, maybe, maybe inch and three quarters, inch and a half. So would that be considered a stick or is that a branch?
That would be considered a stick or, or, and we kind of can, can actually consider them synonymous. Sometimes they're the same. Um, it's not all just, this is a tree and this is the sticks that fall off the tree. So, um, that's, that's kind of the same. So that's more of an issue to where we look and we just say, if this is weighing down the cart tremendously or it's sticking out ten feet, that's where we get to have that conversation, absolutely.
Well, it's just on your website, it goes, you know, small sticks, not branches. So I'm like, well, what's a stick? What's a branch?
Other questions for McBride? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question that came up in a letter today and that's why I'm raising it. And I don't know who it is for, whether for you or the city or whatever, and that was the question, uh, since this, uh, the, what you collect will be used for composting. And the question was from this citizen, if somebody uses herbicides on their lawn, uh, then it shouldn't be, or I guess that was the understanding, it shouldn't be used for composting because there's herbicide material in there. Will you make a statement then that you should not use herbicide on your lawn in order not to, whatever, infect the grass with herbicide so it can't be used for composting? Or is this a question that?
Are you talking about fertilizer, herbicide?
Fertilizer or whatever it is?
Oh, okay, no, well, we can't, we, we wouldn't be able to tell people not to fertilize or debug their yard or anything like that. Um, and actually Earl would be.
Is that a legitimate question? Because that came up today. Somebody wrote this today.
All right. Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, we, we do that right now. I mean, nothing would change. I mean, we accept grass clippings that have herbicide or pesticides on it all the time and compost.
Your mosquito fog eat is part of it.
And, and it doesn't make any difference, right?
It's not a concern.
Okay. I, it just came up today. I didn't know anything about it. I'm not a horticulturist or whatever.
No worries.
I thought I raised it. Thank you.
Other questions just for McBride? I have one more for you.
Sure, absolutely.
And the question that, uh, Counselor Hanson reminded me, a question I got from three separate people over the weekend, food waste. Will you guys accept food waste as gra, as part of the green waste program?
Food waste into the comp, uh.
A lot of people compost their food waste in town. It's becoming more and more.
Salads.
Yeah, so your, your, the greens that you don't eat, whatever, you put them in a bin. And we actually had some of our elementary schools that were interested in starting this program. Is that something that you guys have ever done? Could that be part of your, uh, collection?
It's, the way we describe it is if it's organic, then absolutely you can put it in. Um, and that's the, our communication out is as long as it's organic and it grows in, in the ground, um, or of, of that nature, then it's okay to put in there.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for just McBride? All right, turnover, Counselor Pligus.
Um, I had a couple of questions. First of all, uh, on the contract termination, the only, the way, if I read it right, we can terminate for cause and we can terminate for cause only. Um, my concern is, cause always has a lot of different interpretations, particularly when you get into disputes over. What I'm worried about is, and I, I, I hope it never happens, but it does happen at times where our community, I'll use cable TV as an example, is not happy with services and all of a sudden we don't have control over these services or we find out we don't have control over these services. So could you go into a little more detail about how this contract is structured and what authority we do have to make sure that as a general rule, our citizens are satisfied with this company and hopefully we have the ability to correct things?
Sounds like a question for our city attorney.
It is.
Yep.
Mayor, counselor. Um, I could talk for forty-five minutes on this. And because you put, you put your finger on it. There, there, there's no shortcut in, contracts are always terminable for cause, however you want to say it, material breach, cause. I mean, there are a few contracts out there that are at will, but most of them aren't, except in the employment arena. Um, so there's no short answer. Um, you, you have to sit there as your attorney and their attorney, uh, and, and think, look, do we have the proof that these guys are breaching this contract? Are they not doing what they're supposed to be doing? And can we marshal that proof? And then what happens if we pull the plug on this contract? Are they really going to sue us? Um, maybe. Uh, and then we have to be prepared to, to have the evidence to say, you know, they're serving, you know, they're, they're not, they're not doing their business, they're serving one person, uh, you know, over on the west side of town and that's that. Um, and they're not trying to do anything else. So I, 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 I don't mean to be casual about it, but it's a question that's very hard to answer until you get down this, to the specifics, uh, with what somebody is doing or not doing.
So I would, uh, this is twofolded, both from McBride and for yourself. How long have you, has the city done any research on this company as to their experience, their background, what other, what others, what other communities, uh, feedback from other communities or anything along that line?
I, I have not. Mayor, counselor?
And the second question is toward, toward the company. How long have you been in business? How many communities do you work for? Um, how do you handle these type of things?
So, great question. So customer service is something that we, uh, really take pride in. To answer your question, we have been in Sidney, Nebraska for the past three years, um, operating there as well. So the customer service question, so sometimes actually it, uh, we get a heavy rain, so let's say, and sometimes we go to dump and it's not coming out really well and so, uh, we'll wait, call the customer. But sometimes they'll say, hey, we, you know, you didn't get all of it, our, our policy is, um, we're great, we work with it. They call, we come and write back and just make sure that we dump it all. So sometimes, um, things do happen and come up to where customer service is needed. And that's something that we take really great pride in. I know we provided, um, in the RFQ over, I think it was fifteen to twenty letters of recommendation, um, from current customers as well as, uh, contacts, uh, to be able to call and to elaborate on the service that we have provided.
Thank you.
Can I clarify with you really quick? You said you are in business or city?
No.
I have under the impression that you worked in business in Sydney.
So we, we've operated for three, for three years and then what happened is, in Sidney, Nebraska, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the Cabello's Corporation, their main corporation, they house over two thousand employees there. Um, Sidney is just a small town the size of six thousand people. Um, and during that time, um, from when we started, there were six houses on the market. Now there's over two hundred and fifty houses on the market because they're getting bought out by Bass Pro Shops. Um, so during that transition phase, there, we've had, uh, numerous people leave the community and we felt, um, at our time that it would be better to pursue, um, a larger town in order to do it. So, um, currently we, we are not operating in Sidney right now. So we operated for three years and then we're not anymore.
Are you operating anywhere right now?
No, not currently. We've been working on this for the past ten months, um, with the city of Laramie to where we wanted to focus primarily on one town.
Okay. Um, do you want to follow up on that?
No, no, actually I was just gonna, uh, do I think Director Smith, you asked Director Smith about research on the company?
I would love to hear more feedback. I mean, this is a concern for me.
Sure.
And let me, let me say one more thing. The forty-two thousand we're giving is upfront every year. I don't want to get in a situation where we're unfairly, I'll use our cable, cable disagreements in the past. I, I'd like to avoid that if we can by having things structured in such a way that's, that's a simple dissolution if in fact it comes to that. Um, so that's my concern.
Absolutely. It's a great concern.
And I'd like to hear more from our staff.
Yep.
As to how we can protect, how, how have we protected ourselves with this contract?
Well, um, back to the, the references, I, I did not talk to anyone from Sidney myself, but I know that city manager Jordan has spent an awful lot of time, uh, talking with Jonathan McBride and Jean Russell and doing research. And I feel very comfortable that if she's making a recommendation to go with this company that, uh, she is, uh, very comfortable. She certainly wouldn't be doing that if she didn't, didn't feel comfortable with them. Um, I think as the city attorney alluded to earlier, we do have options under the contract and, uh, one of the reasons that we have proposed a subsidy is we want them to be successful. We don't want them to fail. So we're going to be a partner with McBride's Yard Waste in helping them be successful. We're going to provide a subsidy, we're going to make referrals on their behalf, and we also want our customers to be happy because our, their customers are, are customers as well. So we both have a vested interest in making this, um, arrangement work. So I feel comfortable that if they don't do what they say they're going to do, they're not going to be successful and they, they won't be in business very long.
And I appreciate that.
Can I, can I ask a clarification question?
Sure, please do.
If it comes to the point where they, it's not working for whatever reason, is there any clause for the city to be refunded the subsidy? So come, say, the end of year two, it's, it's not working for whatever reason, we're having too many problems, the city wants to terminate the contract, they're not financially solvent, whatever that is, does the city get our subsidy back?
Uh, Your Honor, I would say no, we do not get any subsidy that we had already provided, but we would not owe any future subsidies.
Thank you, Counselor Pligus.
I just have one, one other question for staff and you're, you're the right person, Director Smith. Um, if we were to provide this service as a municipality, I think you said it was sixty thousand dollars per year just for the pickup?
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Pligus, at the bottom of page three of the cover sheet, uh, there are two, uh, charts there. Those are outlining the estimated cost of the city providing that service. Under the voluntary program, it would cost just less than sixty thousand dollars and that's assuming, I believe, a thousand customers, uh, to start with. So it's completely variable. We would absorb a lot of the operating costs within the program as we operate it now.
That's what I want to, that's what I'd like to know is out of that sixty thousand dollars, how much of it subsidized and how much of it would be taken care of by, uh, the fees?
Well, the, the fee would cover the cost and that, and so when we develop the program and we determine what our costs will be, we have to establish a rate that covers that expense. So, and that's where the seventy dollars per year per customer.
So based on a thousand customers, and I, I don't, I could do the math, but I, I don't have it in front of me, based on a thousand customers, the seventy dollars per, per year would cover our, our costs to operate that, that, um, enterprise?
That's the estimate, yes.
Okay. If it was more, if we had two thousand, um, it would still balance out and pay for itself?
The, the expenses would be higher, but then you generate more revenue as well. So it would balance out and that would be the objective. It's not a moneymaker, but we don't want to lose money as.
All right.
Same respect.
And if we started out less than, this is important to me because in essence, if we started out less than that, let's just say we only had five hundred people in the community, we'd have to subsidize the program?
Most likely.
Most likely we subsidize it to the tune of thirty thousand?
Potentially.
Or something in that range? Okay. Thank you. That's, thank you for the questions.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Am I reading this correctly? Because we have talked about the contract now for quite some time. And it says in the contract statement here of McBride's, the first contract runs for, I think, ten years? Well, it says, "Contract through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven." What am I reading wrong here? Contract between City of Laramie, Wyoming, and McBride Yard Waste Contract. It says, "Contract runs through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven." What am I reading wrong? The term of this contract may be extended. It doesn't say anything about dissolving the contract. Am I reading a different document, or what am I doing here?
Director Smith, could you clarify between the subsidy and the contract then?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, that's correct. It's a ten-year contract. The subsidy expires after six years.
I understand that.
And after that, there's no subsidy provided. However, the other terms of the contract do apply. The components where the city refers customers to them, the non-compete clauses, all of those other components of the contracts still apply throughout that ten-year period.
And it says at the end, "It can be reduced through mutual agreement of the parties after December thirty-first to two thousand twenty-two." So it doesn't say anything about dissolving the contract before two thousand twenty-two. If I'm reading this correctly, what am I doing wrong here?
Well, the contract could be reduced after five years.
No, not what it says. Or reduce through mutual agreement of the parties after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
That's in five years.
Oh, that's in five years. Okay. I grant you that. So after, where five years, we're locked in, no matter what?
Unless there is cause to terminate the contract.
Okay. Doesn't say anything about that, but...
Well, it doesn't.
Counselor Schuster?
I have one for McBride again. Thank you for coming up. We'll just keep switching you guys out. Are you going to advertise outside the city? I mean, there's a lot of little subdivisions within five miles of the city. I just wondered, are you going to advertise to them too?
So currently, the current solution is just for Laramie residents. So however the zoning of that works to make sure that if you're a Laramie resident, then usually outside the city, correct me if I'm wrong, outside the city limits, you're not a Laramie resident.
Correct.
So that encompasses everyone that's a Laramie resident.
Okay. Well, I think you're missing a small majority of people.
Right.
All right. Further questions from counsel?
Thank you very much. Those are great questions, guys.
Thank you.
All right. I think that we're ready for a break on questions.
Thank you.
Okay. So counsel's pleasure. Do you guys want to go to the public first? Do you want to take a break now? It's eight o'clock. Okay. So let's go ahead and do public comment on this right now. Is there any members from the public that would like to come forward, please? If you can, give us your name for the record, and then when you're all done, if you can sign a piece of paper on the table when you leave. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. My name is Jennifer Boyson. I'm with Wyoming Waste Systems, and I'll be brief. We would just like to ask the council to consider voting to just discontinue the collection sites around the city at this time, reevaluate the effects of that on the city, and then later on, if the city still sees it going into a public-private partnership, put a new RFQ out at a later time. And if that does come, maybe include language for the city, willingness to talk about subsidies, not agreeing to it, but willingness to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this? Please come forward.
My name's Anthony Allen. I live at two-three-zero-five Spring Creek Drive, directly across from the LaPrell Waste And I'm very pleased, I must say, to hear that a solution is being considered to this. I wish that if this solution was agreed upon, it could start even before eight weeks. And there's quite a few other issues that have really frustrated me as living there that I'm sure maybe you've heard in emails or you've heard in public commentary in other times. But I'm basically the enforcer for following the rules at that particular dump site. You know, there's a big, beautiful sign that says, "This is what you can put in the waste bins." That's rarely followed. You talk about an inch and a half limb, I've seen trees in the bins. There have been times in the fall where you cannot count the number of black bags that people have left after dark. And when I see it, I go over and say, "Hey, man, you know, that's not allowed in there. What are you going to do about?" Well, I'm going to call the cops, because it says there's a seven hundred dollar and fifty fine. That when I've talked to the gentlemen who come and pick that up for the city, say, "Oh, well, that's not really enforced." You know, there's never been any enforcement with any of that, to my knowledge. I would figure if ten people got a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine in the City of Laramie, that would spread rather quickly, and most people would probably have considered not dropping black bags, refrigerators, and couches. I have photographs just from this month that kind of drive home that point, and perhaps you've seen photographs like that or driven by them yourselves. But I'm very happy to hear that a solution is being considered to this, because it's very frustrating, as living directly across from those sites and having, you know, my property, its value. I'd have to sell my house between November and May first, I think, just so people would think that I was living across from the landfill. So thank you very much for considering that, and I hope that whatever solution you come up with is done as expediently as you possibly can do. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Any other public comments on this? Please come forward.
Thank you for taking my comment. I sent a letter earlier...
Can you introduce yourself for the record? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Pardon?
Can you say your name?
Barb Deschler.
Thank you, Barb.
I'm a Laramie resident. And I sent a letter earlier that you probably got, so I won't go into those details, because you have it written out. But I'm excited about this, probably as excited as recycling that we have, because it's so convenient. But I have two daughters in Portland, and I know you think of Portland as being real different in terms of green yard waste that they would put in. But when I go out there, I do some yard work, and it is so convenient to be able to wheel this cart around and just put stuff in as I work in the yard. And it's amazing to me how much I fill that every week. And when I compare what I do here and there, it's about the same. And I love to put my, you know, our kitchen waste, peels of things and stuff, in a little container. There's a company out there that actually makes a container that goes under your sink. And you just fill that up and then take it out, wash it out, and there are bags you can buy that are compostable, compost, whatever. And so, I don't know, that would be a chance for maybe another business to come in here and sell those things. But I find the convenience is wonderful. I think McBride's has been great. I got their little notice on the door, and I called them right away. I said, "I want to do this. Please let me sign up." And they've always been so courteous and kind, because I've been a little impatient wanting to get signed up. So I'm really hoping that you'll give them a chance. I know there's probably some risk with it, but with my dealings with them, they have always been so courteous and explain things and ask me to wait until they've had time to work with you. So I hope that we can give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you could sign the sheet on the second table, thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Please come forward.
Councilmembers, Jenny Madsen in the tree area. You guys asked all the questions that I was worried about, size of the bin, bags, branches. It sounds great. Sixty-nine dollars is well worth what I would pay. And the idea of keeping the landfill free, I don't think is going to be any competition. It certainly wouldn't be for me. That's a long way out to be driving stuff. And, you know, people who have trucks maybe are still going to do it, but I'll bet they're still going to like dumping it right there for seventy dollars a year. It's very good. So, yeah, I think I'm for it. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this? Come on forward. If you guys can introduce yourself for the record?
Mayor and Council, this is my wife, Leslie Wagner. And I'm Robert Wagner. Some of you will remember me from a number of years ago. And I prepared a letter, but I'm going to, I'll give you a copy, but I'm going to try to summarize some things. And for those of you who don't know me, when I moved back to Laramie in two thousand and four and learned that the city did not have a compost program, I was initially a little bit shocked and also saddened. But instead of complaining, I launched a major volunteer effort to help change that. Over a period of twenty months, Leslie and I, with the help of other community residents, secured signatures for more than six hundred local residents who supported the creation of a community compost program, which should give you an idea of the type of support in our community. And we also prepared thirteen reports to help the city in this endeavor. In two thousand and seven, we presented those signatures of support and those reports to the council. And at that time, I think there was a big group here who really felt optimistic about the future of the compost program. In early two thousand and nine, when good progress was being made on launching the compost program, I spent many, many additional volunteer hours organizing a meeting to bring potential collaborators together in an effort to create a win-win situation for not just city residents, but for the entire county, Centennial, Rock River, the rural subdivisions, ranches, farms, et cetera. Among those attendants at that meeting were an Albany County Commissioner, the county planner, the school district one maintenance director, the former solid waste division director, the solid waste division director from Cheyenne, a representative from Tri-Hydro, two representatives from the Town of Rock River, including the mayor, three representatives from the University of Wyoming, and a representative from the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality made a two-day trip to Laramie to be part of that meeting. And there were also three representatives from the city, including then-Vice Mayor Klaus Hansen, as well as the former Public Works Director and the former solid waste manager. It was an incredibly productive two-and-a-half-hour meeting, and everyone in attendance was on board with developing a winning compost program that would serve the entire county. Near the end of that meeting, I had already spent several hundred hours trying to encourage the city to start a compost program, and I was ready to back away. I asked the three City of Laramie representatives if the city would take the lead in hosting future meetings involving all of the collaborators in attendance. All three City of Laramie representatives stated a resounding yes, including Klaus Hansen. As far as we know, the city did absolutely nothing to bring all of those collaborators back together like what was clearly stated at that meeting. To us, this is incredibly, and I'm going to get passionate here a little bit, to us, this is incredibly disappointing, because had such meetings continued, we most likely wouldn't be here today talking about the problem we're talking about. Yes, please.
So for us, this inaction that we feel by the Laramie City Council and the City of Laramie administration was the beginning of many frustrations to come, and following is just one example. In two thousand and six, Robert and I officially adopted Undine Park to keep it clean. It's a community service project, and we've taken a great deal of pride in it. In fact, we cleaned the park three hundred and forty-seven times during that period. But there's been one ongoing issue, and that's been the issue with dogs and their owners. So in early two thousand and twelve, we sent a letter to the City Parks Advisory Board outlining our concerns and some suggestions. That letter went completely unanswered. We then sent a similar letter to the Laramie City Council and several city administrators, and that letter too went completely unanswered. Finally, Robert called the Parks and Recreation Director in an attempt to schedule a meeting with him and others, and the Parks and Recreation Director told him that he didn't want to get involved in this issue whatsoever. So for us, it becomes a bit of a pattern. So we're now beginning to understand why other caring members of this community have felt like their voices weren't being heard. We certainly have been feeling that way. There's other examples, too. We didn't want to take up too much time, but, so we want to go back to that two thousand and nine compost meeting that involved all those collaborators that Robert mentioned. The county commissioner in attendance stated that providing funding may be the county's major role in the program. I don't know how that situation is now. That was two thousand and nine. And he believed that the county wanted to be a collaborator. It was shared that a UW Associate Vice President and UW Sustainability Committee were confident that UW would collaborate in a compost program. And the City of Cheyenne Solid Waste Director reported that the Cheyenne compost program is more than paying for itself by keeping many materials out of the landfill in combination with compost sales. With that in mind, we believe that the City of Laramie may be misleading residents by stating that the compost program is costing the city one hundred and sixty thousand a year. That program might be costing that much, but it doesn't take into account the materials being diverted from the landfill. Now, maybe that situation was talked about a little bit tonight, and we didn't know about that conversation when we wrote this letter. The Cheyenne Solid Waste Director said that the City of Laramie has many resources to turn to for help and guidance, including Cheyenne and other public and private compost programs in Wyoming, Colorado, and beyond. Representatives from the Town of Rock River and the local school district were on board with the program. The Tri-Hydro representative expressed optimism, since many potential collaborators had stepped forward. Finally, the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality Representative at the meeting, Craig McOmney, stated that partnerships are vitally important for community compost programs to succeed, and that all the stakeholders need to be involved. Our point, a frustrated point, had the Laramie City Council and city administrators built on that two thousand and nine meeting of collaborators, had the city formed partnerships with residents and civic organizations, perhaps had the city adopted an Adopt a Bin program, although it sounds like we have a volunteer who's adopted a bin program, similar to the Adopt a Park program? Had the city worked with commercial landscape companies instead of criticizing them, as may have happened? Had the city worked with its own police department concerning illegal dumping at the compost bins? Had the city not misled residents about what we feel are the true costs of running a municipal compost program? And had the city worked progressively instead of reactively? We don't feel like we would be here today figuring out this problem.
Thank you, Leslie. I think after hearing the presentation tonight, there are a lot of questions about this private business moving in and doing this. There are businesses that isn't even in operation right now. I support private business. I'm a private businessman. I run my own freelance business, so I support private business. But we see Laramie, and I've been a resident here for many, many years, both during college and since Leslie and I've got together, we see a lot of businesses come and go. I feel like if the city is not obligated to pay back the subsidy, I would really question that. And before taking a vote, we urge you to pause, to truly listen to residents, to forge partnerships, and to begin building on that two thousand and nine meeting of collaborators, which involved everyone in this county. In other words, approach this issue progressively and with vision and true community and county involvement, instead of placing blame on citizens and being reactive instead of proactive. And I have a copy... And I have a copy of the minutes from the meeting that Mr. Hansen was at. They offered some good suggestions, and I just think it's time to take a pause and really, truly try to listen to residents. One of the things that I have heard numerous times over the past several years is fewer and fewer residents are coming to work sessions and listening sessions, and I think maybe there's a reason why, and I urge you to also think about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anything you'd like the City Council to receive, if you can give it to the city clerk, she'll make sure.
Do you want me to email it?
You can email it, or you can give her a hard copy, whatever works for you guys.
Do you want me to?
It's your choice.
Okay. Let me see. Now, email a copy of the minutes from our meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I do.
Any other public comment on this item? Please come forward.
I did not want to leave tonight without endorsing what you've just had heard. I do not want them to stand alone. I think I cannot speak to the economic impact of the problem you're having, the various costs back and forth, but I can speak to enforcement. The City of Laramie does a dreadful job of enforcing its own codes. Snow removal is a scandal. I cannot believe that if you drive around and look at the sidewalks in your city, that you could be less than dissatisfied. This problem does coincide with code enforcement. It would not be too much of a problem to find out who is committing the grossest of these offenses, like leaving sofas at Tony's across the street from Tony Allen's place. It wouldn't be that difficult. You pay for people supposedly to monitor and to enforce the codes. You know you do. It is a scandal that you don't do it. I sent you an email. I volunteered myself to go to a site, one of the sites, you could reduce the number of sites, to go to a site with a camera and take the license plates and the trucks of the various landscape companies that are violating a clearly posted sign. Take us up on it. Take people up on these options, but don't take me up if you're not going to do something about it. That's a waste of my time, and only further, I think, brings disrespect for the city council. So I think the points you've just heard from the Wagners, really, you ought to think about that. You really, really ought to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on this item this evening? Going once? Twice? All right, I'm going to close public comment. And at this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back for some discussion and deliberation on this. Back from break, so we've had public comment. Let's make sure we don't have anybody else that wants to do public comment. All right, so let's open it up to discussion for the council on what we would like to do here. Discussion? Mr. Henry.
You know, I came, truly came to the meeting prepared to vote against the contract, but after reading all the emails from our residents and listening to the people who have come forward, I am going, I don't have any qualms about voting yes for this contract. And I think that it's important that it's voluntary, that people can participate if they want to, and if they don't want to participate, they don't have to. And they still have a chance of taking their green waste to the landfill themselves. So I am, that's how I feel about it.
Counselor Schuster?
I have always been, I thought, in support of it. I realize a lot of people, and you're subsidizing it, and so I said, you've got to do the math. And I said, what do you mean? I says, here we are, spending eighty-one thousand dollars a year to pick up the green waste containers and to empty them every single day to watch them fill up with branches. I'm not going to say limbs, I'm going to say branches. To me, what I always judged that I could put in there, if I could run over it with a lawnmower and have it shred, go into the lawn bag, then it was a twig. If I had to cut it with a saw, I agree with you. That means I need to take it to the dump myself. And they're very nice about it. I went out there because I've had to bring down a tree that was over half-dead, and they're like, okay, that bit right there, right there, and completely nice about it. So I don't see any problems with this. Will I join it? Yes, I will. I figured it out, just a little bit different, because we're not going to use it twelve months a year. I figured eight months with the leaves. So to me, it's eight dollars and sixty-three cents a month, because I'm dividing it over eight. I'm not dividing it over twelve. It isn't like we can do our snow removal into it or something. It's for basically spring, summer, and fall cleanup, so. But yes, I'm in complete support for it. I think that they're missing a little bit by not considering checking with residents within five miles of the city, because there's a lot of county residents out there that have beautiful yards, but they've got to do something with it, too. Thank you.
Counselor, can I add just one thing that I forgot to bring up? Is that I think it's important that we're, to say that we're not discontinuing the compost program. I mean, this is in support of the compost program, and I know that Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Wagner were very instrumental in helping us with getting our compost program up and running, so I don't want that to go away. I want us to still compost and have it available for the public, have it available for the Parks and Rec Department, and the Monolith Ranch, and whoever, you know, whatever else city entities want to use it, as well as the public. And it's very inexpensive, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows the composting, we're still doing it. We still have compost available for the public.
Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor on Sunday asked in a letter to the editor for comments from the public, and I just thought I'd pass along some of these comments briefly. I received nineteen. I think most of these comments went to other members of the city council. So just briefly, I'll just talk about some of these. If the council doesn't continue with the neighborhood bins, this person wanted to have a waste bin someplace in a central location, perhaps Labonte Park. Three people wanted to accept all green waste at the dump with no charge, current policy. Continue with the neighborhood bins, three people were in favor of that. Private curbside program, seven people were in favor of that. Dumpster was full at the old Laramie High School, and she doesn't really have a solution. She's on a fixed income, would not like a fee system. Another person would like to go to the dump, doesn't want a fee system, doesn't want, and here's another person that didn't want the collection bins by his house, Mr. Allen, because of all the problems that he mentioned. Trial program was another potential solution for the green waste with the bins either voluntary or a fee system. So that was about nineteen of the comments that most of the council received on this.
Other comments from council members? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I will say, I also came to vote against this thing, but I'm slowly coming around to some things here. It seems to me there were two issues, namely the price issue for us, that it's expensive for us as we run it right now, and the other issue that was brought up tonight, namely that these sites where the green waste is being dropped are being misused. They are a problem for the neighborhood. People across the street find it offensive, and I agree with that. I know the site the gentleman is talking about, because we put our green waste into that particular site and try not to abuse it, but I see what's happening around there. So I think this is a way that we may solve the two problems that we're having here. The only question that I have is, we are having a fairly lengthy contract here, and we have no idea whether the problems, at least the dumping problem, will subside now. I hope it will, or is it going to happen because there are no more dumpsters there that people leave it just sitting in the lot? That concerns me a bit, because then that problem isn't solved. I hope that isn't going to happen, and if it doesn't happen, then of course, I'm totally in support of this private-public partnership to solve the problem, because we are reducing our, if you want to call it a deficit, to at least half for the next three years, and hope to have it continue with no deficit after those three years. I'm just a little leery that it will all work out the way we hope it will work out, but I guess, what do you say, nothing ventured, nothing gained. So I think we probably have to do something here. So that's where I am.
Other council members for their first time. Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. For those of you that have been to our work session and have listened to council, I think you'll find that there's great support for the green waste program, for composting. In fact, as far as composting goes, we have tried to give it away, we've tried to sell it, we've tried to do everything we can to move it. We obviously produced more than we can for the size of the community to use, and so a lot of it goes out in dump trucks out to the Monolith Ranch where we spread it out and try to have a beneficial use for it. But we're very successful in the program we have. We want to continue that. I think the decision we have as a council now is, what are we going to do about these unsightly bins that we've had? I'm not in favor of those. I want to have something that will fix that in the community so that we have a way to get this without having a blight on the city. So I think the proposal that's come from McBride's is very tempting. They have been very thorough, they've done their homework, and I think the decision is going to be the council, whether or not we're going to just stick with the, well, I don't think anyone in the council is interested, from what I've heard, of keeping the sites. We've got to either go to where everyone voluntarily takes it to the landfill and have a no pickup service, or do the pickup service, so that's going to be our decision. Or maybe come up with another idea that we haven't thought of. Personally, I do not like the unsightly sites that we have. There's only one or two that's really shielded from residents' homes, and I think we've got to correct that.
Other council members for their first time. Vice Mayor?
So I'll go. I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I can't really tell you how I felt prior to getting here this evening, because I've been all over the map on this issue. But a yes vote tonight on the amendment that's currently on the floor, although we might want to reread it because it's been a while, is to remove the green waste bins. Yes? Yes?
I thought that was the second amendment we have to make.
No, that, clarify, that comes with the contract.
It comes with the contract. So it's the removal of the green waste bins. It's a continuation of our composting program, and it's allowing the citizens of Laramie the opportunity to have McBride and whatever the name of their company, McBride's?
Yard Waste.
Yard Waste, to come into our community and market and do what the private sector does, and to see if they can make a go at a business that they have experience at. So it's going to be a choice for every one of the residents in town, if they want to sign up or not, to the tune of roughly seventy bucks for eight months of roughly weekly service. The city stands to save approximately forty thousand dollars a year if we venture down this road. It's not a huge chunk of change, but it's better than not saving any money at all. So I'm going to go for it, see what comes of it, and wish them the very best of luck with their adventure, and perhaps the community will really embrace this, and we'll go from there. I mean, we have, if we're upset about the subsidy or whatever, this community, this council, in fact, has offered numerous, numerous subsidies and opportunities to other situations far beyond this cost. So, and I don't want to spend the rest of the evening listing them, but I think we're fine with this.
Other council members for their first time. Councilmember Flickus.
Yeah, I'll say a few things. By the way, when I read all the emails, I could almost sum the majority of them up into two things. Number one is people love the bins and would love to see them continue, which really isn't too much of an option, in my opinion. But the other alternative I heard from people is at least offer us something, at least offer. I didn't hear anybody say we need a mandatory system of picking up green waste, but I did hear some people say it would be nice to have the option of being able to have that service if we could do it. It's a tough call right now between going public, using our public facilities with it or our public, and going private. If we don't do it, is our risk is really low. We're not investing in equipment, we're not investing in bins, we're not keeping personnel, and we're always going to be there for a fallback if, in fact, something does happen. We'll have another choice to make. If this company succeeds, all the power to them, and actually, our investment, I think, will be really well-spent. If this company is taking their stuff out by themselves, or providing a private service, or providing a voluntary service on our own. So I'm comfortable with it. I like the fact that the risk is lower on us, and we're not hiring new personnel, we're not having to use the equipment and so forth and so on. So I, at this point in time, I'm in support of it. By the way, I wanted to say a couple of other things. As far as the green waste bin goes, there was a lot of comments that the commercial haulers have screwed it up for everybody. Yes, we have had a problem with commercial haulers in it, but it's not the problem with those bins. It's, if anything, I haven't seen commercial haulers using those bins to the extent I saw them last year. The problem with those bins are, is people are putting everything in them, even the ones that are putting the correct stuff in them, and it's like, they've got a huge load because they're not, we're not talking yard clippings, we're talking about major, major cleanup jobs that really needed to go to the landfill, and it was like, it was just too easy to, I've seen those bins with trees in them that are three times taller than what the bin is. I mean, people even, they're too lazy to even cut stuff up so they fit in the bins appropriately, and it's too bad, because it's not a large group of people in our community. It's just like those people that don't do their sidewalks and so forth and so on. Unfortunately, we have people in our community that just are self-centered and care about themselves and really don't care about the community they live in. The good thing about us is there's not that many of them out there. The bad thing is, we can't make programs like this work. It's unfortunate, but we just can't do it. Thank you.
Other council members for their first time. Other council members for their first time. So I'll say a few words here. So I continue to have serious concerns about this, and I want to kind of lay those out for the council. The contract itself is, to me, too vague and too long. I think locking us in for ten years on a wish and a hope is not really appropriate for the city of Laramie. If this was a one-year trial contract, I might be inclined to go ahead and take that risk, or even a two-year contract. Ten years with no other options for the city of Laramie is, I don't think that that's a good position to put us in. We have no comparable cities that have run, other than Carney, Nebraska, that has a municipal service, that have been successful with a private collection. So I have, I have serious, serious concerns about that. There's no guarantee in the contract of the thousand pounds of compost for the citizens. The subsidy is again a serious concern for me, and there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about, well, we've done this for other places, we've done subsidies. I don't think that we have ever done a subsidy out of one of our enterprise accounts. We do business council stuff all the time, but this is money directly out of our enterprise account. I don't want everybody to think about that because one of the things we've heard is everybody wants this to be voluntary. The subsidy that we'll be paying them is not a voluntary subsidy. There's not an opt-out box for community members to take that off their utility bill. What this subsidy will amount to is four dollars and ninety-four cents per household, per household in this city, regardless of whether they use the service or not, we'll be paying for it. Four dollars and ninety-four cents. What I heard from the public comments is we want an option. I completely agree with Counselor Flickus. They want an option, they want something, and, but they, and they're willing to pay for it, but they want it to be as cheap as possible. They are, they don't believe that the city and Wyoming in general is in a, is in a good shape to be assessing more fees on people. That's fine, but what we're doing by approving this contract is exactly that. We are assessing almost a five-dollar per fee, per people to pay that has to come out of our solid waste enterprise fund. I don't think that that's fair. If we're going to have a mandatory service, let's charge the dollar eighty-nine per household and have the city run it. That's the most cost-effective way to do this service. It is not through a subsidy where we're, where people are going to be paying a subsidy for that whether or not they're using the program. That's not fair. And the price comparisons with the subsidy also really bother me. Why would we be asking residents the voluntary service for the city of Laramie to provide it, and the voluntary service through McBride's costs essentially the same thing? There's a sixty-nine dollars a year, ours is seventy dollars a year. So why would we be asking residents to pay five dollars a year basically in a subsidy for McBride's? And then if they want to pay for the service, they have to pay that on top of it. So instead of a seven dollar a month or a seventy dollar a year voluntary service, now if you go with McBride's, this is turned into a substantially more expensive service. And I don't think that that's fair. The numbers simply do not add up here. If all we're trying to do is sustain the program that the community loves, we need to do it at the cheapest cost possible. McBride's isn't it. It's just doesn't, the numbers just don't, they simply don't work for the residents. There's no way around the math. So I continue to have problems with that. I also, I have concerns about putting this big of a contract on a business that has essentially very little business history. Three years and a city that didn't work. I understand Sydney's concerns with their economy and everything else, but that's a ten-year contract to be heaped on a company that really has no history. And the city will be locked out of trying to remedy any problems down the line because of a non-compete agreement. So if this service doesn't work, and it's, I agree with the city attorney in that there's so many ways to interpret a for cause, and then we end up in a lawsuit, and it just doesn't work. The other thing I heard from the community members is they are, they are split on a curbside service on a central location. I heard multiple residents this weekend ask for a Fourth Street location. They said, "When you tear down the Public Works Center, put a central drop-off at Fourth Street at Lebonne Park and do that, and that would be great." And then there's the, "We'll take it to the landfill." Council a week ago in the work session, or two weeks ago, whatever that was, was also very, very split. I don't think as a community we've come to a good answer on this. The other thing I want to remind everybody is we're not running this program just to run a green waste or a compost program. So through conversations with our public work staff, this, this program actually saves us money in disposing of our bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant. So if we don't have a compost program, we still have to pay for some way to dispose of our bio solids. That cost could be ninety to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So a cost of eighty thousand dollars a year on a compost program seems like a good deal to me. So I think that we need to keep all of this in perspective. I don't think we're there yet. If, if the contract goes forward tonight and it doesn't have a subsidy and it's a much shorter term, I would support it as a trial, but not as it sits. It's too long, it's too much of a risk, it's too expensive, and it locks the city out of any other options for ten years. Talking about encumbering fees for city council with no options. So I'll leave my comments at that. Anybody else want to comment on a second round? Counselor Schuster.
I wanted to thank the dump for one thing, just because we're doing comments, that even at the compost site, there's a dumpster there. So if you take them out there, we were talking about bags around something. They make it nice enough that if you take your stuff out in bags, you can just let them open, dump them, and then put what's left of the bag in a dumpster. So I wanted to thank them for that because we are doing a compost program. I went out there before and opened a twenty bags up of other people and put them in there just because, it's like we said, people are abusing it, whether they abuse it here in the Laramie or even out at the dump. They still just throw their bags out there and are just too lazy. Other companies, we had another company right now asked us to probably, please re-bid it again. I don't think if this company does, I don't think they will. If they would happen to fail, we have another company that would love to just jump in there right now and do this. Do we want to hire more personnel and more trucks? Dave Flickus talked about that. Do we want the expanse of having more personnel, more trucks, and everything else to the cost of the city to get us going? Is it going to pay for itself? Yeah, down the road it is. Because the initial cost is going to be dumped on this group here? Maybe they're bringing everything they had at Sydney to here? Great. Like they said, the cost to the average household is going to be, for this program, for this subsidy, is four dollars and sixty-seven cents a year, with an average cost per month of thirty-nine cents to help this subsidy. Thirty-nine cents a month, okay. Could we probably do it for that? Oh, I guess probably in five to ten years we could break even if we did it ourselves because our initial investment is going to be huge. Because I have seen what a new solid waste truck, because that's probably what we would use, is use a brand-new truck, just like that, side dump, anti-wind and everything else that we do, and we'd have to get one of those to start out. No, I'm ready to go with this one. If something happens, I feel we do have a backup plan in the wings, but I'm ready to go with this one. Thank you.
Counselor Flickus.
I just, just one thing I respectfully disagree with what you said. Yes, it is a ten-year contract. I hope this company does succeed, but one of the reasons I'm, I'm in favor of doing the direction we're going is if they don't succeed, we cannot, the contract will expire. In other words, we can terminate the contract, or they'll terminate the contract if they're not successful. If they are successful, my goodness, all the power to them, and I hope that, I hope they're doing well, and I hope it's, it's good for our citizens, and I hope it's good for them. So even though it can be terminated for cause, obviously performance, and they have to perform to the contract. If they don't perform to the contract, it can be terminated. My guess, we won't have to do something like that because they will terminate themselves, just like they did in Sydney, Nebraska. So I'm not worried. I don't look at it as a ten-year commitment. I look at it as a commitment that if you're successful, we'll continue with you. If you're not successful, we'll have to do something different. So I just disagree with the comment on the ten-year part of it, or I have a different interpretation of it.
Other council members. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. One question that wasn't brought up, which I read repeatedly in some of the comments, and you didn't mention it, is there were people who said, "I don't want another bin." And I don't know how to solve that problem, but we could ask them if people, would there be an option of, let's, let's say people putting it out in a bag, and then they pick up the bag and empty the bag out at the, at the, at the, at the recycling, at our dump site? Is that a possibility? Because that was a comment that came up several times. "I don't want another bin." Did you read it too, several times? Is that an issue? It's not for me, I mean, I can handle it, but is there a solution to that problem?
Director Smith?
Take it to the landfill, right?
It's optional, you don't have to take it.
You take it to the landfill, right? Yeah, that's a solution, okay.
Other comments from council members on this side. Counselor Gabriel.
I was initially, after hearing the comments in favor of this program, but after hearing the mayor talk about the length of the contract, I really have a concern about that as well. I would like to see some kind of voluntary, or I'd like to see a program that would maybe go for a year or two to see how it works, but to be locked into that length of time is a concern to me. I like the voluntary aspect of it. We're talking about fifteen percent of the green waste that would be going to the landfill in this, this program. That also is a little concerning to me. We're not talking about, you know, a lot of waste, green waste, and so I'm still a little hesitant whether or not I want to commit to this or not because of some of the concerns the mayor brought up.
Other comments from council members. Going once. Twice. All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Flickus.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
No.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
That motion carries. All right, on to item number thirteen.
You have to take it out first.
No, it's neither. Item number thirteen is Counselor McKinney.
Yes. I move to approve of the City Council Resolution 2017-41 stating the city's intent to fund enhancements in accordance with the 321 Third Street in action plan for enhancing Third Street by 2020, with and authorized by Mayor and City Clerk to sign the resolution.
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Father Teeny.
Resolution is a, is kind of the next step in the process that started some time ago, as the cover sheet states in 2015. If you remember, in 2015, the city began work on developing the Third Street Plan. You've seen that plan now come through, not only in opportunities for work sessions, but also as an adoption, as an adopted plan more recently. If you remember, within that plan, there were different recommendations. One of those recommendations in the plan were enhancements along Third Street, the Third Street Corridor. The primary focus of this resolution is to, one, show support from the city at looking at one of the enhancements which would coincide with the work that YDOT will be doing in the upcoming years, which is a resurfacing project. So they'll be taking up asphalt and then resurfacing. It's not a full reconstruction. But through that process, YDOT has identified enhancements, some of those things being bulb-outs in certain areas and some improvements of concrete curbs and gutters. All of those are included in their, their design, and they will be paying for those things through their typical enhancements. One of the items that they, that they will not, or that's beyond the scope of what they're doing, is the bulb-outs or the median islands located at the north and south entrances into the downtown area. Those were identified in the plans to provide a gateway. In addition to those, they had other recommendations like possibly signage and things like that. This resolution here is to, to note our support for YDOT so that YDOT knows that the city of Laramie is at least committed to the idea of looking into the design of the medians. What this resolution would do then is if it was approved, the city would then go out and look at design options for those medians so that we could provide costs, and that would allow for the city council to consider budgetary items in the future. This wouldn't lock you in to those budgetary requests in the future, but simply that you would entertain them based upon those designs that we would go out, go out for so that they would coincide with the project that YDOT's actually doing, which in the long run is a cost savings for the city. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, or, and I don't think anyone else is here for this, so if they were here, they've left.
Questions. Counselor Schuster.
Will there be a cost for the design? A lot of times when we have something designed, there's a fee for that too, so are we going to be starting to spend money right away just for this?
Correct. The, in the, on the last page of your cover sheet, it's two of two, so the second page, you're looking at a design, total cost, so with design, fifty to seventy thousand for each median, looking at fifteen to twenty thousand for design. The Laramie Main Street Alliance has pledged ten thousand dollars towards the design work for this, so we're picking up the rest of that in the near term.
I saw it fifty to seventy, but I guess I didn't...
That's okay. Nope.
I thought that was for bulb-outs, and the state will be paying for the bulb-outs. This is just for medians and, okay.
Other questions? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I presume that Third Street will remain a major shopping street because there are businesses there. And I think it's a little short-sighted, this is, I've complained about this before, to design this in such a way that there isn't that much parking, but the parking seems to be okay, but to, for example, not have any bicycle access for this particular street because looking into the future, I think that's where our transportation is going. Furthermore, I think down the road, we would have to look at the introduction of public transportation, that people, especially as they get older and don't want to drive anymore, take the bus to go shopping downtown. Are there going to be bus stops down there on that street? It seems to be a design at this point that is mainly geared to the automobile, to have two lanes both ways and whatever, and a little bit of parking on the side. So that's fine with me, but I think it's not future-oriented as to where we as a city and where we as a society may be going as far as transportation is concerned, as far as access is concerned to downtown businesses, and how we would get there. I would, I'm not in favor of this right now, the way it's designed, and I don't know how to vote because I'd like, of course, changes to come, but I don't like the changes that I see right now. I don't think they include what I would like to see. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Flickus.
I guess, you know, we had a discussion on the various aspects of this, the various enhancements and so forth. Obviously, one of them was medians. There was a variety of, are they, is this committing us to putting median, medians and that design concept on the Third Street corridor at this point in time? I mean, isn't that, we're, I, it went from a, hey, these are all the options, what do you think? And now there's something before us that's saying, okay, we need some money to build some medians. And I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sold on it yet, I'm not against it, I'm not for it, I just, I'd like to even, I can't even visualize other communities that have this type of thing down their, down their main street that also acts as a major highway. What, is there an example?
Riverton.
Okay, Riverton, thank you for bringing that up. So...
Mayor and council, so kind of, kind of taking a slight step back and just kind of thinking about the process... about the process. So with the, with the plan, as you noted, there were a lot of different recommendations within this. The identification of the medians was through discussion with YDOT as well as the Main Street Alliance and trying to piggyback on the project that YDOT is doing as an opportunity for, this would be the best time to do the medians if we're going to do them. What this resolution would do would be to commit to funding design, but not commit to funding the building of the medians. The, the reality is, is the, the funding is going to have to come in future council budgetary discussions, and that is where the council will have to decide based upon the designs and the actual known costs, because we need those designs to know those costs, whether that's something that's supportable and fundable by the council. Staff believes that this is a good opportunity. This is the time to do the medians. This is one of those options, as I mentioned. Another option is signage. Signage isn't as important because at this time in the timing of this project, YDOT can resurface the, can resurface Third Street. We can put signs in later that, you know, are on poles and things without, without a major issue. When they, when they go through and resurface this, if we can piggyback on that, put islands in, there is going to be some cost savings and things that we'll note with their design. But as you noted, future, future funding will have to come from council or other sources to actually construct those medians in those locations that we look for design. Thank you.
Councilor McKinney?
So is this just going to be a singular idea? I mean, this is the idea that we're, we're trying to get through. Nothing's going to change. It's not going to change. We're just going to try and get this done. So that's what we're going to try and put down when they get out and do their project. There's no other design, just this one?
Mayor, mayor and council, what, what we would do is if we go out for a design, that's where we'll get those professionals' recommendation as to what those islands might look at, look like and how they might be configured in those intersection. Is that what you were asking? Or are you thinking more like just the islands versus signs versus something else?
All of it in general. I mean, it's, you have the singular idea, this is what we had. We had the bulbouts, we had the islands, we had the signage, we had the lights. We had the single lanes, we had the no left turns, we had, I mean, and it goes on and on for Third Street. But the one thing that you're not considering, we get a closure on I-80, what are you going to do to downtown when they have to divert them down Third Street?
Mayor and council, so the, the islands, that's, one purpose of the design is to make sure that they fit within the traffic pattern. YDOT still wants to move cars. That's their ultimate objective on Third Street. With the overlay that they'll be doing, they are looking at the left-hand turn restrictions, the restriping in some of those areas and the speed reductions, as well as the bulbouts. Those are all things that they are including in their design that we will see come to fruition when they do the reconstruction. The only reason why we're focusing on the medians now today is to piggyback on that opportunity that if we can do it now, we'll realize some cost savings. Other things could come in the future. You could see from council, I would predict, other resolutions may be coming in the future that may include signs or the lamp, or the light posts or things like that. This is more time sensitive for YDOT because they want to know, are we at least committed or do we at least think that this is an idea we want to move forward with so that if we know that we're going to do some design, they're comfortable in knowing that that design's coming to them at a later point and they can incorporate it into their overall design for Third Street, so.
But the design itself can change.
Absolutely.
We're not going to just sit there and say, okay, we're going to go from two foot to 11 foot and, and come to a dead end at the, at the backside of going downtown.
To be honest, it's going to be a pretty collaborative effort with YDOT because they're going to really want to make sure that the, the, the travel lanes and the traffic flows through those medians or next to the medians in a proper fashion. And so, and that's the thing we don't know. We don't know exactly the width. We don't know exactly how high those curbs will be or what those tapers will be. And that's what that, that's where we just have to get professionals involved in that, so.
And then it's, the one on south, it starts at Sheridan, correct?
Yeah, so.
Goes toward downtown. The other one starts at Lewis and goes back toward town, to downtown?
Lewis and Clark.
Lewis and Clark, yeah. It'll be between those two.
Yeah.
Councilor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. And what we're talking about is similar to what we see on Grand Avenue. Is that correct? The island configuration there?
Mayor, mayor and council, they're going to be much, much less dramatic. We're talking about six inches, maybe eight inch curbs with low plantings, not as, not as large and as big as what you see on Grand Avenue.
They won't be as tall either, right?
No, very much not. So, yeah. Fairly small. We're estimating eight to 11 feet wide, give or take, with the tapers at each end, so.
Councilor Schuster?
Okay, thank you. I have trouble with this, and it's not that I don't want them, but to look at this, I realize that we have Jubilee Days coming up and people will be parking for 10 blocks outside of downtown. If we put these in, we're probably only removing 10 to 15 parking spots, but we still are. Because just like you said, they'd probably be up to 10 feet wide. That means that there's going to be a no parking area on both sides of the streets where the islands are. Because just like Grand Avenue, they removed all the parking off the street and did bulbouts for parking in those areas. To design two of them, it's going to be 30,000 to 40,000. To install two of them, it's going to be 100,000 to 140,000. And we're not sure where the funding's coming from. Once we commit to the design, that means that yes, we are probably going to commit to them. Would I like it? Yes. Do I want to lose the parking spots? No. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Leonard Tini, could you clarify, because my memory's not good from attending these meetings, on how many parking spots? Because I know that they've talked about this.
The, the parking, so, so think north and south. On the north end, you're going to lose no parking spots. There's no on-street parking in that whole section. Where you do lose some parking if you put medians in is going to be on that south end. On that south end, most notably, the, the east side has more parking than on the west side because of driveways and where, where things are. The exact number of spaces, I can't remember the exact number, but you will lose some parking in there, so.
And is it, Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think you just tipped YDOT's hand by saying they want to move cars. That's what Third Street has done for 100 years. It has moved cars. In the meantime, we've built an interstate that goes all around it, whether you're coming from the south, whether you're coming from the east, whether you're coming from the west, you can use the interstate to move cars. I think this is looking at, at Third Street as it was purposed 100 years ago. I think it is different now. It could be a very nice shopping street where people could stop, where people could park, where people, you know, do their business. We don't need to move cars on that street. Streets, the cars can move around on the interstate. That's what we have it for. Councilor McKinney pointed out, what happens if the interstate closes? Yeah, well, then we have a problem. But we have a problem now then, as it is. Quite frankly, I, I think YDOT, because this is a state highway, sees it for moving cars. I think we ought to tell YDOT, that's not the purpose of it anymore. It would be a very nice shopping street, whether it has a, a, a center lane down, whatever, but purpose not only for cars, but for other modes of transportation, whether you walk, whether you have enough parking spaces to do some walking with it. I mentioned bicycles before. This would be, for my taste, the, the purpose of Third Street so that people can use it for what it is now, namely a shopping street, to conduct business there. Right now, you're redesigning it to rush cars through it and not stop there. And I think that's redoing the purpose wrong for that street. So quite frankly, because YDOT knows it's a state highway, they are designing it in that fashion. That's, I don't think it's really necessary. We've got an interstate around it to move cars. Thank you.
Any other council members for the first time? Councilor Shumway?
The City Council had a work session when, and a presentation, a PowerPoint with this, and it was supported with Trey Sherwood from the downtown. And, and as I recall, there was a lot of excitement and a lot of ideas that came forward with this. One for pedestrian safety, and then another one, they felt like it was time to, to make some positive changes in the downtown. I think right now, the council is talking about becoming traffic engineers and redoing this or scrapping it or whatever after a lot of work has gone into this. I'm, I'm going to stick with my initial feelings that I had, that made sense to me when they did the PowerPoint, that this really had, was something that the downtown was invested in, that they were excited about, and that it's a positive change for the better and an improvement for the downtown. So I'm going to support this. Obviously, there's always something that could be better. We are limited because, as Councilman Hanson said, this is a state highway. It used to be the old Lincoln Highway. Now it's, it's more of a downtown corridor. So hopefully, we'll do the right thing to improve safety, beautification, and you, and use this for the betterment of the, of the downtown.
Vice Mayor?
So it's the medians. I am not in favor of medians. I, I understand how they could be viewed as aesthetically pleasing. I even understand how they may be considered a safety.
Island.
Something, so someone doesn't, has the inability to jump lanes, but it's just not something I am at all in favor of. I might be, you know, obviously in the minority on this because when we had the median discussion going down Grand, I was not in favor of it probably about four years ago now, and I think I stood alone on that issue at that time. So if my memory serves me right. But anyway, I have to also think about the very hard work that the folks downtown did. And, and even though I personally don't like medians, you know, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. It's, it's not the cost, it's just me. So I'm going to support this. The extra money that the city potentially could kick in, again, not that we have any spare cash lying around, but, you know, is concerning, but they've worked hard and, and I think we can maybe talk about the medians another, another day, as you said, right? Am I understanding you correctly? So, so we'll just go forward with this because a lot of hard work and it really needs something. So, so we're just, I'm just going to vote yes and call it good.
Any other council members with questions? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. I want to add some comments to this. So I serve as the downtown liaison, and I appreciate the support for downtown because they have been working very, very, very hard on this. This group started 18 months ago, you know, with initiative to know there was a YDOT project going on, to bring all of this forward, to do the work, to do the legwork, and have continued to push this project through. Since councils had the work session and then we, we also asked council approve the plan that downtown brought to us and blessed it and sent it on its way for more work for downtown and YDOT and the city staff, they've continued to have meetings with YDOT and the city staff and downtown, talking and looking at all of these options and kind of going forward on this process. So I think when we had that discussion with downtown, it was we, they were asking for our support of the plan because they really think that these changes are necessary and then that they would bring these items to us as they come up, which is exactly what they're asking us to do now. YDOT needs to know by July 1 that the City of Laramie is going to support this continuing discussion. That's what this resolution does. As far as future funding of the medians, I've certainly had conversations with the, with Trey Sherwood on, you know, that, that they're not done with trying to come up with funding for construction. They have $10,000 for design right now. That doesn't mean that that's all that they're going to contribute to the pot. The other thing is that a lot of the features that they talked about, the bulbouts, some of the lighting, other pieces, YDOT is absorbing into their project as an enhancement. So that comes at no cost to us. So really, if we're only talking about design of medians, you know, that, that certainly helps.
Point to be made too is that through the efforts of the planning that you did before YDOT looked at this, that's how we achieve some of these enhancements without us actually having to participate in them, the bulbouts and some of those things. The, it will change that corridor. Also, thinking about the planning process, it's really the first steps in how do we change that corridor? If the community does not want to see that corridor just funnel traffic, it's going to take multiple steps over time to work through the traffic issues with YDOT, making sure that when it snows and the interstates close, that they're okay with cars coming in and semis going in on Third Street, coordinating all those efforts and then creating something that works for our community as a whole. And so, I mean, this is just, this is one piece of that long-term step. You will see other things probably come down, come before you in the future. It's just this one's more time sensitive, so.
That's a good point, and that's kind of what I was trying to convey, is they put a lot of planning into this. This is something that YDOT's asked. So I hope the council will support this piece of the design, knowing we're not done with the conversation. Downtown, city staff, YDOT are all working very, very, very hard on this and we'll, we'll see this again. And I appreciate Councilor Shumway's comment about not being a traffic engineer because I think it's way too easy for us to get into the nitty gritty and we have groups, we have wonderful staff and YDOT personnel in downtown that are professionals in these areas, and I think we need to let them do their jobs. Councilor Plakas?
If I add all this up, it, it looks to me like, as Councilor Schuster said, we're committing to a project and the value of the project is estimated to cost somewhere around $180,000. So my question to staff is, have we, or to the planning department is, have we budgeted at $180,000 in our future budgets to be able to cover this?
Please.
Mayor and council, first off, to clarify, for design and construction, we're estimating 50,000 to 70,000 for each island. So you're looking at a, a range of 100,000 to 140,000 for construction and design. All we would be looking at immediately would be looking at the 10,000 to 15, or the 15,000 to 20,000 each for the islands for design currently, which we would be looking at our major capital construction fund to do that out of. In the future, though, that would be the funding, so the, the remainder of the funding minus the design would be something council would have to consider.
There's a placeholder in our future budgets?
No. That'd be something that would have to be looked at.
Assistant C. Manger.
Honorable Mayor and Council, there is not today, but we would get the conceptual or the, the design done and have that discussion in your next budget, which that discussion will probably start at the end of December, early January. But the, the other part to that is there may be funds raised by Main Street to pay for it also. You know, and in reality, if we get the design and we don't have the budget, then it won't be done. But it's our intent to plan for it in the design and get a design that we all support and then attempt to fund it in the next budget year, as every project is funded that way in many ways. Now, we, we have changed project priorities from budget year to budget year at times and those things can happen. So without being able to categorize what our revenue is going to look like, this is the best option we can do to say we are committed to looking at design, we are committed to looking at our budget to see if we can fund it or look at alternative funding sources to assist with funding.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective.
Other council members? I've lost track. Councilor Schuster?
The, the next sentence in this, and I hate to bring it up because they've kind of did a little bit, "In conjunction with the meeting work, the city utility lines must be upgraded," which is- which is not included in this estimate cost. Now, do I think they would look good? Yes, I think they would look great. Where are we putting them? We're putting them on Sheridan, and I don't wanna pick on any of the businesses there, but we've got a gas station and a smoke shop, and then we're gonna go to Lewis and Clark on the other end, which, we have a credit union and a yoga place and a AC company. So I mean, I, I realize what we're saying, but I wanna see the improvements in the heart of downtown. I don't wanna see them on the fringes. That's one of my biggest statements on that, is, do I think it would look great? Yes, I think it'd look just fine, but is it gonna be in the heart of downtown? No, it's not.
And, Councilor Schuster, to add to your concern about the business owners, I do know that Main Street has been reaching out and having conversations with all of those individual business owners, so that nobody's excluded from the conversation, especially when the improvements are gonna be right in front of their businesses. I think they've tried to make a significant effort that way. Any other council member for discussion on this item? All right, City Clerk, roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. So the hour is 9:35. To proceed with the business meeting requires a two-thirds vote of council.
I'm really, uh, one item.
I also wanna say, before we vote on that, my discussions with the applicant on this item, they intended to do a presentation, and I expect that this conversation will be lengthy, so.
Well, we can't go past 10.
We can, we cannot go past 10, so that will only leave us 25 minutes or so to have this conversation. Um, so, not saying anyway, just wanna put the facts on the table, Councilor.
Your Honor, I believe we can suspend the rules to hear the next item, and we can also suspend, with an additional vote, at 10 o'clock, we can suspend the rules to go past 10 o'clock, with the two-thirds majority. I'm looking at the city attorney. That's the way I would interpret it.
City Attorney, I can read the code of conduct, or you can?
I, I noticed you were looking at me, Councilor. And I don't have the code of conduct right in front of me.
I do.
Does it say no event past 10 o'clock?
If, no, it, it says, um, let me read this. So the, the, it is intense, City Council, that no additional agenda item will be introduced at a regular business meeting or special business meeting after the hour of 9:30, unless the City Council members present vote to extend the meeting by suspending the rules with a two-thirds vote of the members present, and continue the meeting until 10:00 PM. If the item introduced at a regular City Council meeting and being discussed, uh, is not, by 9:30 PM is not concluded by 10:00 PM, the council shall adjourn and the regu, and.
I'm wrong.
The regular City Council meeting to another date. So we either have to adjourn the item to a special meeting date, or it would go to the next regular agenda. So I think we only have until 10, no matter what. Council Polikas?
Your Honor, I would, I would like to ask the applicant if a half hour is not, or 20 minutes is what it comes down to, is not enough time, perhaps we can either do a special meeting, um, or something along that line.
I think that would be appropriate.
But I would engage them.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with that, and they've been waiting very patiently. I think that we owe them the courtesy of least hearing till 10 o'clock.
Well, I think to have, I think we could have a brief discussion with them on what their preference is, but any other discussion past that needs a two-thirds vote of council to continue.
Correct.
The meeting. So, does the applicant have a preference on continuing this item to the next business meeting, which would be?
Try, if we're doing a special.
July 5th, or City Council can, uh, look at finding a special meeting date to have the discussion?
Mayor and Council members, um, one of the things that we've talked about extensively is that we've been doing this for three and a half years to even get to the point to bring this to you. And it's quite disheartening to us to, uh, be looking at a potential approval, if this body approves this project, uh, and then trying to get a final plat in and do construction yet this fall of some sort. We had hoped to be able to get it finished by the end of the fall. We are looking now, because of various rewrites with staff, that it probably could be half-completed by fall and then sit, follow all winter and, and be finished in the spring, so at least there could be construction of homes in the 2018 timeframe. And so, um, we would appreciate your best consideration. We do have a lot of material. There was lots of concerns and criticisms that came up at the last meeting that we would like to address. Um, and we think that there are a couple of items in particular that are very important to us, uh, that have been, uh, of concern to various members of the council. So I'm not sure how we can best address this. We had about an hour's worth of time between, uh, Planning Director Taney and, uh, the people who are here with me tonight, which include Don Perhoda, who wanted to go over the MOU with you. There's been some, a lot of, a lot of misconceptions about what's in the MOU and what the effects of it are. We have with us, uh, Warren Greaser, who authored the PUD handbook and wanted to discuss with you some of the things in there that were of concern to you in the last meeting. And we have, from Coffee Engineering, Dave Coffey and Stuart Townsend, who went through many, many discussions with the city staff, including engineering and planning, to design the street, uh, which is designed as a low-density street, which is not, not the normal design that would come out of a standard subdivision, who want to explain to you why they are doing that. So I don't think there's going to be time to do that tonight. So we're trying to weigh the differential between having the council understand our project and having it pushed back, uh, yet again after three and a half years.
Let me put a, a suggestion out on the table to council. I think this conversation is extensive enough that we need to set a special meeting for it. Um, I am looking at the calendar for next Monday. That would, if we had a meeting on Monday, that wouldn't necessarily delay third reading the following week. I think legally, we have to have seven days between readings, is that correct, City Attorney?
I think all th- three readings have to be done in 10 days, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't delay it, no.
Okay.
Monday night's planning commission?
Do we anticipate, Plainer Tini, do you know if there's?
Six thirty.
Do a six-thirty meeting.
Do a six-thirty meeting? Okay. Uh, how does council feel about next Monday at six-thirty?
Works, that's fine, but what about next Tuesday? Can it go in with the, um?
No.
We'd run.
No. We already have a full work session that evening. How do you feel about doing next Monday? It wouldn't, it wouldn't change the overall timeline, and the special meeting would be for you guys.
Exclusively.
Exclusively.
Exclusive.
Also, please bear in mind that, um, all these professionals behind me are not inexpensive to have sit there for hour after hour, uh, and that getting to the podium is, is more important than, than, in my mind at least, than some of the other items that, uh, were discussed tonight. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm visibly, uh, disappointed that, that we've reached this point in, in the evening.
I, I.
So, next Friday at six-thirty.
At six-thirty, and you guys are the only thing on the agenda, so at six-thirty, the podium will belong to you and Plainer Tini.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that emotion to continue the meeting, um, I believe that we need to adjourn to go to item number, directly to public comments, because that is required regardless of the hour. Do we have any public comments this evening on item 15? Seeing none, going to item number 17. Councilor Hanson, can you please adjourn us to executive session?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I move that council, I'm sorry, I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, referencing State Statute 16 dash four dash 405, uh, exception X.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, back, Councilor Gabriel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned to executive session for personnel.